All right. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Okay. Roll call.
Please.
That right Commissioner Kofelt. One who's let us know he'd be absent today Commissioner Daniels.
Here.
Commissioner Deal. Absent today. Commissioner Getzelman.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
And Chairman Solvi.
Here.
We have six. That is a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. All right, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Mendoza, will you lead us, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, for the for the record, I'm interrupting. See Commissioner Gonzalez here with us now.
Wonderful. Yes, let the record show.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public, which is then one nation. Under God, and of liberty. And just this world.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. Welcome, Commissioner Gonzalez. All right, on to our public comments. This is the time for public comment on matters not on the agenda. I'm looking for hands up. And I see none. Do we have any written correspondence?
We have no written correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magana. All right, on to agenda additions, deletions, and corrections.
Yes, for the record, distributed via email was correspondent correspondents who received from the public for agenda item number three. PLN two, two, zero, one, three, four, Loomis, and for agenda item number five. PLN two, two, zero, zero, nine, zero, Caltrams, Gerapata Bridge Rails. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magana. All right, Commissioner comments or requests? Anything for my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Roberts.
I just have a question for staff. I'm wondering if anybody is aware if there were power outages that are affecting people's participation in today's. Um, hearing, I'm only wondering because with the, you know, Big Sur one, I, you know, they're most likely to go down to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to be here if they want to be.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Mr. Spencer. Do you know of any power outages? Is there a concern?
I am looking it up now. The concern would be. I mean, I don't think it would prohibit us from moving forward, but the concern would be whether or not we have. The ability for everyone we. Would like to join us to be able to join us. And so I'm looking at the outage map. For PG&E. And it's taking some time.
That's okay, I'll move on. Okay, thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Works' comments.
All right, I still learning how to use the computer here. Sorry. Good morning, everybody. I just. I just wanted to um, let you know, I went to. Uh, the ad hoc subcommittee meeting at the advisory Agriculture Advisory Committee for the mitigation. Agroconservation mitigation. Program that they're working on. And um. It was um. Good, I got to meet the new ag commissioner, which was um. Plus for me anyway, as a producer, grower, etc. Um, but a couple of the takeaways I got from. Meeting was, uh, there was the, a, a grower um. And this is mainly for uh, the. If you're not sure if you remember, but the um, where they take like prime ag land and put it in an easement. For the. Development, if they do a development, then they have to do that. Anyway, there one grower that was there who said he's talked to quite a few other growers. Um, said that not many are interested in doing easements. Um, so they think that there's gonna ECZ as a problem. I'm trying to be quick here. The. Other. Comment he made was that um. As a county. People, we need to do everything we can to keep. Um, agriculture viable. So that there's not so much of a need to develop that prime farm rent. Then there was a lady there, I think she was a representative of the development group. And um, she was, they were not really excited about it either. Um. They, her, one of the things she commented on was maybe we need to utilize. The footprints better and start building up instead of out, especially on that prime beautiful. Farm ground, because every time I drive up the valley, it just come in awe, because we're down in the very south county and. We are the furthest thing from that beautiful prime soil and it's um, it always bothers me when I see the housing being put on it. And. Um. They're worried about, you know, being more red tape, more problems trying to keep costs down. Um, of course, and they just don't see it as um. They're having, they're struggling with it. Um, and then the end loop fees came up. Um. They're afraid that they're gonna be the. Might end up being that only answer. As far as um. Not being able to find like-for-like soil type for, so they'll just pay for it. So that was some of their concerns. Um, they're gonna have another meeting in March. They're having two meetings in March. I'm gonna miss the first one. I'm gonna try to make the second one. So anyway, just wanted to let you know what's going on.
Thank you so much for that report, Commissioner Work. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes, I really appreciate the question that Commissioner Roberts asked, and I have been able to confirm that the power is on in Big Sur and the community is good to go to participate in that item on the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Daniels.
Thank you. I found the same thing.
All right, no other Commissioner comments? I see none. Moving on. Referral items and other matters? Planning Commission referrals?
Um, yes, we are continuing to work on a number of the referrals and we don't have anything on the schedule today, but we will be bringing forward. Um, the annual long range. Work program and general plan implementation report before it goes to the board. Um, and uh, we have a number of other. Items targeted to bring back to the commission. Um, in response to our list of referrals and we'll continue to work through them.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. All right, on then to scheduled matters. Agenda item number two, PLN two, two, zero, one, three, zero.
Good morning, um, I'll be presenting on that. Let me share my screen. Okay. Good morning, Planning Commission members and Chairman Monsalve. I'm Zoe Zep, and I'll be presenting staff's report on PLN two, two, zero, one, three, zero. The property is located at thirty-three Petrero Trail within the Santa Lucia Preserve in Carmel Valley within the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. The parcel has a zoning of resource conservation with a density of one unit per forty acres with a design control and a site plan review overlay district. This project consists of construction of a four thousand six hundred seventy-eight square foot single-family dwelling, a one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight square foot accessory dwelling unit, a nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot detached garage, a five hundred and forty-four square foot detached office, associated site improvements, and the removal of five protected coastlife oak trees. The proposed structures are shown here on the site plan. The associated site improvements include concrete paved driveway with two uncovered parking spots and a fire truck turnaround, a pool, stone paved walkways, a large outdoor patio, and landscaping with native plant species. The main dwelling's front and rear elevations are shown here. The proposed main structure would be a single-story home with a height of thirteen feet and nine inches from the average natural grade. There will be two covered porches that extend off the rear of the structure. The elevations for the detached accessory structures are shown here. The accessory dwelling unit is shown in the top left-hand corner. It will have a height of fifteen feet. The office is shown in the top right-hand corner. Its proposed height is eleven feet and two inches. And the bottom two images portray the proposed garage. Because it is partially below grade, its height from the average natural grade is two feet and three inches. The proposed colors and materials include medium brown brick shingle cladding for the exterior walls of the main dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit, and the detached office, dark stacked brick cladding for the exterior walls of the garage, stained wood for the windows, doors, and trim, bronze metal railing around the porches, a ballast rock flat roof for the garage, and Tesla solar roof tiles for the pitched roofs of the other three structures. The home aligns with the surrounding neighborhood character and complies with the goals and policies of the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan, which calls for the design of the structures to be compatible with the visual character of the area by using appropriate siding, design, materials, and landscaping. The proposed home's earth tones and natural aesthetic will blend in with the oak and pine tree forest that surrounds it. This project includes the removal of five protected coastlive oak trees, one of which is a landmark tree. The site plan here shows six coastlive oak trees to be removed. However, one of them is under the six-inch minimum diameter to be considered a protected tree under their Monterey County Zoning Ordinance Title twenty-one. All five protected trees are within the proposed driveway area. The applicant explored moving the driveway to avoid the two trees closest to the main structure. Unfortunately, due to the grading pattern, this was not feasible. Therefore, five is the minimum amount of trees to be removed under the circumstances. To compensate for the loss of these trees, the Arbors has recommended a three-to-one replacement ratio for the non-landmark trees and a five-to-one for the one landmark tree. The replacement ratios are consistent with the forest management plan prepared for the original Santa Lucia Preserve subdivision. A condition of approval has been applied to this permit to ensure seventeen coastlive oak trees will be replanted on the property. The Arbors' report concluded that the proposed tree removal will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding environment. Staff recommends that the planning commission consider an addendum together with the previously certified EIR for the Santa Lucia Preserve subdivision and approve a combined development permit consisting of an administrative permit and design approval to allow construction of a single-family dwelling, a detached garage, an accessory dwelling unit, and a detached office, and a use permit to allow the removal of five protected coastlive oak trees. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
You missed that? Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Roberts?
The question I have is about the tree removal and um, it's been a while since we've had a preserve um, project, I think, in that falls under the total number of trees removed. And I'm wondering if you can um. If staff can tell us about, I guess, th- that number, the overall number, where we are in that number, if this property is consistent with. Making sure that we don't exceed that number in future projects. Just a little bit of background maybe on that.
Um, yes, so let me see if I can find the tree count right now, but I know that um, we are well under the maximum number of trees to be removed in the Santa Lucia Preserve. I believe we're around um. Fifty, forty to fifty percent of the trees that were um, approved for removal. And this, um, the five trees being removed here would not put the approved number of trees over the max limit that was allowed. Um, we're still pretty far off.
I guess, and 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 to help, I was reading about it. You do have all that information in the findings and evidence, finding seven, and it's page seven, uh, number E, it looks like. I I'm curious to know, though, what the remaining buildout is. If you think we're forty, I, now I don't know what the percentage you said, but um. You know, do we, are we, are, is the, are we at the same amount of buildout as we are tree removal essentially?
So I'm looking here, and it says that um, we have built out fifty-two point three percent of the lots in the Santa Lucia Preserve. And um. I believe we're under that for the tree count, but I'll have to double check.
Thank you.
Um, so. Currently, we have removed forty-seven percent of the trees that were allowed for removal, and we're at fifty-two percent um, of lots that have been built out, so. We are still um. We're lower on the tree removal than the lots being built out, and then these five trees proposed removal would represent point four percent of the allowed trees for removal for the whole subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other Commissioner comments? I see no hands up. Is there an applicant? Present? For a presentation?
Um, I don't see uh, the applicant present.
Okay. Does the applicant accept all the conditions?
Last time I spoke with them, they did.
Okay. All right, then let's go to public comment. I see no hands up. Do we have any public? Oh, I see a hand up. Noel?
Oh, thank you and good morning. Uh, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Great. My name's Noel, and I'm I'm president of Carmel Valley Association, and thank you for the very good presentation by staff. I just wanted to bring up one quick item for consideration, and uh, that is with reference to the Carmel Valley Master Plan, section three dot three. And this addresses ridgeline views, and I'd like to request that this project, PLN two, two, zero, one, three, zero, um, as well as hopefully all other projects where ridge lines are a consideration, that that um, stipulation in the Carmel Valley Master Plan, section three dot three, would be taken into consideration when looking at approvals of projects of this kind. And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Noel.
May I respond to that?
Please.
Um, for this project specifically, this is not within the Carmel Valley Master Plan. It's within the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan.
Okay, thank you. I have seen another hand up. Before, uh, Mr. John Hale.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to react to what Ms. Zep just said from the point of view of the Carmel Valley uh, Master Plan and the residents of Carmel Valley, because we're now seeing more than one or two of these jurisdictional issues where the property in question may not reside in our planning area, but the viewshed impact or the access impact in other cases is in our planning areas. So um, going forward, I would hope that consideration do consider in much the same way that you would consider the coastal Big Sur at the same time as the inland zone of Big Sur. Um, so I I hope that just the fact that it sits in another planning area doesn't negate all of the viewshed issues that Carmel Valley Master Plan covers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Any other public comment? I see Commissioner comments. Okay, Commissioner Daniels.
Thank you. I just want to be really clear because I did read this and watched the presentation, and perhaps I just missed something. This is this, I have a couple of questions, but is this considered ridgeline development?
Um, I, when I did my site visit, I wasn't able to see the uh, staking and flagging from any public view area, areas, and then we also found that this was um, the best sighting for the project because it utilized the open space of the homeland boundary um, to minimize tree removal. And that's why the only.
Yeah, because we're not approving any, I mean, that's not one of the considerations that we're making that's before us today. And so if it should be, I just want to be really clear about that. Um, the other thing is um, just also to to be clear. If there's a public viewing area, even I, and Mr. Spencer, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's a public viewing area, say Carmel Valley Road, and there was an air, there was a development that was visible from Carmel Valley Road, even if it's not in the Carmel Valley Master Plan area, it it should be considered for the purposes of the Carmel Valley Master Plan. Is that accurate? Because I know, just to be clear, we've had this issue with the Big Sur um, land use plan and perhaps a development that's in Carmel Highlands, so it would be in the Carmel area master plan, but if it's visible from Highway one in Big Sur, that would be considered problematic from the point of, from the, from the perspective of the Big Sur land use plan.
I think that the answer is it's ridgeline no matter which policy or area plan applies. Ridge line is a county-wide policy. And the distinction between Carmel Valley Master Plan and Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan in this case doesn't really matter as it applies to that. Um, there are some unique special um, special policies for each one of those. Um, and I don't think that this particular project has any issues with that respect. Most of Santa Lucia preserves way back in the mountains on private roads that are not visible. And so I, I would be surprised if you could see this from anywhere outside of the preserve.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels and Mr. Spencer. Uh, huh? Mr. Commissioner Work, I saw your hand up, and then it went away. I see no other hands up. Any written comments on this matter?
We have no written correspondence for this item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Magana. Back then to the commissioners. Any further discussion?
I have, I have found the tree. Table where we're tracking if if the commission would like to see that.
Please.
Okay. So we have different phases of the Santa Lucia Preserve. And some of them have a use permit approved with the subdivision that allowed a certain number of trees to be removed for subdivision improvements and for the lots development. So some of them were allotted certain number of trees. And as they move forward, some of them have requested to remove trees. Some of, some of them more or some cases less or equal to the number of trees. So these, this table, particular table is phases A through C. I think the one that we just looked at was in phase E. Is that right? So. I can't remember now. Um, phase E, so we have been tracking the number of trees that were allotted and the number of trees removed. And the permit and any notes we have. In phase E, a lot of those, a lot of these units are built in greens. I think fifty percent or so were unbuilt, so it looks like the green is about half of what you're seeing, and white is the other half, which is the unbuilt properties. And then we have totals for that.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Commissioner Roberts?
Uh, just to follow up on that information, I I appreciate that was good. Uh. If I I was trying to go back to see which phase we were in for this one also, um, did this lot have a specific number allowed for removal, or this five is above and beyond what was allowed?
Um, this lot did not have any uh, trees allotted for removal. And but this plot, it is within phases um, A through C.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Daniels?
So just to be clear, and then I'm happy to make a motion, there's, there's trees that can be allocated to be removed to this lot under the table that was just shown to us.
Um.
We're not exceeding any allocation, even though this particular yeah. Site wasn't allocated tree removal. It was really good question that Commissioner Roberts had, just to ensure that we're staying within.
Yeah.
Total number of trees allowed to be removed in this development.
Yes. So I think there were. There were four hundred and forty-five trees allotted for removal for development of properties. And for one thousand four hundred and eighty allotted for removal of road improvements.
Oh, and this is a road improvement?
No, this is a lot. So, so they didn't anticipate that any trees would need to be removed as part of this particular lots development. Um, but they, the application moving forward is asking for approval to remove five trees, so we would add that. I can't remember the lot number now, but we would add that to this, this table. And uh, and change the numbers down here. We're still under the total to number of trees that were considered and permitted for removal back in the nineties, early, early to mid nineties. For the overall subdivision improvements and lots. But we would, we we are on track to exceed the number of trees removed per lot. Just a lot fewer trees were removed for road improvements.
Okay. So we're not creating a situation unintentionally that might be problematic later or which would require amending the original permit. It looks like we're okay?
Yeah, I'm, we haven't gotten there yet, but we could be moving that direction. Um, I don't think it would be an issue for those lots that have allotted numbers of trees to be removed. It, it could be at some point as we get towards development of the last however many lots, that there's no longer that tree removal permit that we're recognizing applicable, and we would have to do something different and often we do addendums to the sequel document for the subdivision to reflect the change in the number of trees per lot. When we go through these, so part of it will be considering what to do from the sequel perspective, and the, and the other part will be from the permitting perspective. For for those lots that have zero trees allocated and ask to remove more than zero.
So I guess my question would be then.
Or more than what they're allotted, I should say.
And I mean, I'm assuming that the permit holder, uh, the, the developments, the preserve is well aware of all of this. I guess that's, that would be my question, that this is a conversation that, that as they're doing all of this approval, because they do so much preliminary approval of projects before it gets to us. Is this something you think they're aware of?
I'm sure. Well, it it about, I would say ten years ago now. We did a deep dive into this particular issue. You know, we did a lot of research. I think we reported to the planning commission was a bit of a different. We did a deep dive into this particular issue. You know, we did a lot of research. I think we reported to the planning commission was a bit of a different commission at that time. From, uh, you know, turnover of people who are here now, might be worth redoing some of that presentation. We didn't work with the San Lucia Preserve at that time, but we've kind of been tracking along using that that this, these tables and all that information that was developed at that time. We haven't really had a new conversation recently.
Commissioner Daniels, does, does that answer that question?
Yeah, and I'll lower my hand because it looks like other commissioners have a question.
Okay, thank you. Um. Mr. Spencer, could we go ahead and schedule that revisit to that plan? Because if we are at fifty-two percent units built, then we're at halfway. It'd be nice to see what reevaluations we might need to be making at some point in the future and start preparing for that.
Yeah, we could add that to our referrals.
Please, thank you. And I have one other question regarding the trees that are being replanted. Are they all being replanted on the lot?
Uh, yes, they will all be planted on the lot.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mendoza.
Yeah, I guess my comments also reference to the trees. Um, I, I know that they're removing five trees, but this development has been going on for a while. Do they also take into consideration, I'm sure there's a lot of trees that have, uh, grown, you know, that were not there currently. So, um, just taking that into consideration, it's probably a really good idea to relook at it if we go out there and, um, look at how many new trees we have that were not accounted for back then. You know, the percentage might actually be a lot lower than what we anticipated. Uh, so it's just, you know, food for thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. I appreciate, um, Mr. Spencer's, uh, explanation. Unfortunately, it's only confused me further. And I think part of it is I have a little bit of knowledge from maybe ten years ago. And so I, you know, it's just, I'm confused. And so, and then going back and reading the, um, evidence and finding, findings and evidence, I just want to make sure that we're saying what we are meaning to say. Um, understanding that there was an approval for uh, an amount of trees removed for the roads versus the actual development of homes. Um, I'm not positive that's what the evidence says and, but I'm also not, I'm not clear on where we are in terms of. I think I understand total number of trees approved, but if that, if our graph, if our spreadsheet shows the differentiation between homes and roads, I'm not sure that that's what the evidence also says. Will you bring that, um, spreadsheet back up? Okay, so if the phase A through C going down, the bottom number, I think for the lots themselves was like six forty-five or something like that. Oh, four forty-five, four forty-five. Okay, so the, the, my question is, okay, so for the number that is four hundred and forty-five, is that what the EIR considered per lot? So the total number of trees per lot considered four hundred and forty-five? But that we're actually at six hundred and forty-seven?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
This is the, the count based on the number of trees allotted per site.
Okay.
And this is the number of lots built. Hundred and thirteen out of two hundred and fifty-four, I think. And this is the number of trees that have been removed on those two hundred and fifty-four lots so far. And then there's a note down here about the tree removal for road improvements that I believe we have consistently been crediting towards the overall forests and tree removal numbers. I would say that when you're not doing vertical development as part of a subdivision and it takes as long as it takes to build out this number of lots is probably not a good way to do permitting for true removal, but, um, that's what we're stuck with at the moment.
Okay. And I guess part of, I, I'm trying to be clear and I, I agree, I would love to have this brought back to this newer commission, um, and for uh, my brain who doesn't remember it at all. Um, I know that we've been pretty tough on applicants in the past who have requested tree removal and, and it, and it's been much more than five trees I, in my memory for, uh, for other lots. And I, I want to make sure we're consistent and a, as Commissioner Daniels brought up, I want to make sure that when we get to the point that there's a lot that now we have exceeded the number that this ERR allows that, I, I mean, we've got an equity issue and I want to make sure that as commissioners, we are aware of that and that we're, you know, putting the future builders in a much different position than the existing, um, applicants. So.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. Unfortunately, I am also a little bit confused because I looked at a lot of trees, says four forty-five and trees removed is six forty-seven. So the six forty-seven includes the lot trees and the road improvement trees?
No. Then, well, I think that the total number of trees permitted for removal was one thousand four hundred and eighty. And there's, and that was permitted in this file number, and I don't see a resolution number, but we have the resolution in the office somewhere. And that there were there were counts about how many trees would be removed for subdivision improvements and how many were likely to be removed per lot. And there was an assignment for a certain number of trees per lot. And in most cases, and I think as Commissioner Mendoza pointed out, as the lots move forward with development and given the nature of the development in the San Lucia Preserve, we are seeing more often than not more trees being requested for removal on individual lots than were allocated. Some of it has to do with trees have grown considerably or entirely since the nineties on lots that weren't known. Um, when the development was, was happening. Um, and this forest management plan was being approved. And some of it is just these, the nature of this development on, in the forested areas and having large custom estate homes being built on them.
So what purpose does that number six forty-seven serve us? What, what are we understanding with that then?
Um, so really this all boils down to our environmental determinations where there was a subdivision approved for the creation of lots and the removal of trees in a forest. And that forest management plan went with those lots and part of the mitigation for the forest impacts was this allotment of tree removal. And that became the subject of a resolution. So as projects move forward, we're doing addendums to the EIR essentially that says, well, there were no trees allotted for removal on this lot. But now we're slightly modifying that to say actually for this lot, there are going to be X number of trees removed. And we're tracking that total from a forest perspective rather than a tree, individual tree perspective mostly.
Okay.
Although, you know, it's broken down by lot, so it has to be tree by tree on lot by lot, but it's overall number for the forest.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I see no hands up.
I think Commissioner Gonzalez's hand may be up.
Oh, there you go. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes, uh, I guess if, if, um, the number of trees to, that were allowed to, I guess, be removed, um, again, it was based on the ninety, ninety in the mid nineties, uh, uh, is that correct? And, and as, um, Commissioner Mendoza mentioned that um, a lot of trees may have either grown from that time or, or died. And I guess one of the other questions that, that I have was based on, let's say that, uh, somebody removes, uh, or the commission approves the removal of five trees and let's say they're gonna plant three to the ratio of one. Uh, that would be fifteen. Number one is, um, are those numbers added back into the equation? Uh, and, and the other question, uh, is if, uh, how do we, how does the county follow up to see if those, let's say fifteen trees survive or not survived? Because those are my two questions.
So the, the numbers do not count replacement trees. Though most of them are going to have at least a one-to-one replacement. Except in the scenario where there's no room to plant more trees because there's already a lot of trees. And, and so that's going to be fairly uncommon. But probably a couple of these lots didn't require replanting. Um, our replanting condition requires a, I think, a, a follow-up. Um, after replanting, you have to verify you replanted. And then you have to do a follow-up to verify that they're still alive within a, a year. I can't remember the exact language in this particular case to make sure that they survived.
So if they do survive those, those trees, even though I, because I remember doing like three-to-one ratios and some of the, um, I guess requests that have come before the, the commission. And so I, and I guess your answer is that they don't count back into the number of, uh, trees, uh, allowed for removal. Is that correct?
Yeah, the table I showed you does not have the numbers for replant, replant.
And, and, and so basically, as you look at lot per lot, um, one of the things that the, I guess the commission would have to look at is, uh, the issue of fire and the density of trees. So anyways, um, uh, thank you for the information.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Mendoza.
Uh, yes, uh, back to the, the tree situation. Uh, just an observation, if we had an allocation of amount of trees being, to be removed and we're already over that, uh, wh- why do we even use that, that resolution? Should it not be on a per lot basis, just like all, a lot of the other projects that we have had? I, I think that that would probably be a better way to do it, uh, even though there is a resolution, but we're not really sticking to it, or how, how do you determine, you know, how to go about it? Because I think that at the end, you're, you're going to be well over, just because we, what I mentioned earlier, trees are growing, so absolutely that resolution or, or that, uh, when we allocate the amount of trees to be removed means absolutely nothing. So I don't even know why we have it. It's just a, a comment. I don't know.
You know. Not ready to really give you a clear answer on that. Um, I don't, I, I think I know why we have it. But I, I think we need to, we need to re-dust off that ten-year-old presentation and bring it back to the commission so we can get the right information in front of you. I think it's really making sure that we're following through with the, the assumptions made as part of the approval of the subdivision in the first place. And this, this whole tree count thing was part of those assumptions. And so we've been operating under that and to do something different, may open a can of worms, I think, that were, we haven't thought through entirely yet.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Commissioner Roberts.
From my memory and perspective, I think this is a cumulative impact issue and, uh, you know, it was what was it, this is a huge subdivision and, and it's a very pristine area. And I think that, um, it was it was a consideration. And then obviously, you know, there was a huge number of trees allowed and considered in the environmental impact report. But as we add more and more, it changes what the analysis was. And obviously the environment changes, but what it could potentially trigger is a whole new environmental impact report, which is, as we all know, a giant undertaking and burden to property owners and all of that. So, um, it's, it's in an effort to stay within what was approved and I think very carefully watched at the time.
Commissioner Daniels. You're muted.
I just wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Roberts just said, and then I would be happy to make a motion if there's no more comments, but, um, I didn't happen to be living here in nineteen ninety-seven, but know that this was probably something that was heavily studied and I'm sure there were many folks that um, it pained them to see a development of this magnitude who cared about things like trees. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, modifying an environmental document down the road just because when, you know, we, we, you know, these, these permits are an agreement, you know, amongst various stakeholders. And so I just do think, you know, whether or not we believe, you know, more trees have grown or not, that, you know, we uphold that agreement. And so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something in my original comments that, you know, might, you know, we'll make a decision now and we'll just change the document later. I, I want us to uphold that agreement for those who probably fought against this project and may not even be here today to, to see this, this next stage. So um, just that was one comment I wanted to make. And with that, since we are going to have this returning in the form of a referral, um, I would just hope that the referral can address all of the comments that all the commissioners made because there were some really good comments um, made here today. Uh, but with that in mind, I'm happy to recommend that the planning commissioner, commission adopt the resolution um, and adopt the staff recommendation for the addendum, the CDP, the addendum and the CDP. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second that motion. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Spencer, roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Daniels.
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman.
Who? Me?
That would be you, yes.
That would be me. Then, then I vote yes. You broke up a little bit. It's kind of like Gesman.
Sorry, come, I might get some. Commissioner, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Work.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. On to agenda item number three, PLN two-two-zero-one-three-four Loomis.
All right, that's, um, me again. Let me show my screen. Um, good morning, Planning Commission and Chairman Solve. I'm Zoe Zep, and I'll be presenting staff's report for PLN two-two-zero-one-three-four. Good morning, Planning Commission and Chairman Montsulve. I'm Zoe Zep, and I'll be presenting staff's report for PLN two two zero one three four Loomis. The project is located at one fourteen story road in Carmel Valley within the Carmel Valley Master Plan. The property has a zoning of low density residential with a B six, a design, a site plan review, and a residential allocation zoning overlay district. The application being considered is to allow transient use of a residential property for remuneration, also known as a short term rental. Shown here is the floor plans of the existing single family dwelling. The home has four bedrooms, three bathrooms, and a large kitchen. The California Uniform Housing Code requires each bedroom to have a minimum of seventy square feet for the first two people and fifty square feet for each additional person staying in that bedroom. The home can house up to eight people under this housing code. Pursuant to section twenty one sixty four two eighty of the Monterey County Zoning Ordinance, the criteria to grant a permit to allow transient use of a residential property for remuneration includes the review of an operational plan. The applicant submitted an operational plan which included all the information required by the Monterey County Code. The operational plan submitted states the maximum occupancy for the proposed short term rental will be eight people per contract and will allow one contract at a time. The rental period for each stay shall be no less than seven nights and no more than thirty. The property has the space to safely park seven cars at a time. Seven parking spots is well over the required amount, which is two. The operate, the operational plan confirms that there will be no events or parties held at the property while under a short term rental contract. And there will be no signage on the property advertising the home as a short term rental. The homeowner does not live within twenty five miles of one fourteen story road. So they have hired a local property manager to be available twenty four seven to be the first point of contact for any guest inquiries or concerns. Specific conditions of approval have been applied to this permit to ensure the residential property complies with the policies and regulations, including making sure there's always a designated point of contact and ensuring the transient occupancy tax is paid. The available parking spaces are shown here. Four cars can park at the top of the driveway near the house and three cars can park down by the entrance gate. This proposal for a permit to allow short term rental went before the Carmel Valley Land Use Advisory Committee on January third, twenty twenty three. The Luac members voted unanimously to support the proposal with no comments or recommendations and no comments from neighbors or the public were made at this meeting. The county received three comment letters from the public. Two were in opposition of the approval of this permit and the other was in support. In compliance with the Monterey County Zoning Ordinance Title twenty one, the operation of a short term rental requires the approval of an administrative permit. This project was scheduled for administrative approval on January eighteenth. Prior to the permit being approved, on the seventeenth, staff received a request for a public hearing from Mr. Rosenthal. His request objected to the administrative approval of short term rental permits. Since his concerns were policy specific and not site specific, this project was referred to the planning commission from the zoning administrator to address the policy concerns. Staff does not believe there is any reason to modify or deny this permit based on current regulations. A letter of support was submitted to staff by Sean Murphy on February second. It rebutted the comments brought up in the objection letter citing the county's current regulations regarding the approval of short term rentals. A third letter was received on February twenty first yesterday from a Carmel Valley, from the Carmel Valley Association. It echoed the concerns expressed in Mr. Rosenthal's letter. Both letters, oh, both letters of opposition requested the project not be considered categorically exempt from SEQA due to cumulative impacts. The county's records show there have been twenty five applications for short term rentals in Carmel Valley. Out of these twenty five, four have been approved. Twenty five out of the five thousand and thirty three residential dwellings in Carmel Valley makes up about half a percent. Staff believes this percentage of short term rentals in Carmel Valley is too small for any significant cumulative impacts to occur. Staff recommends the planning commission find the project categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to section fifteen three oh one existing structures and approve an administrative permit to allow the transient use of an existing single family dwelling for remuneration. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Zep. Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, um, thank you, Ms. Zep. I'm wondering if you could bring up those last two slides again. Yes. And the question that I have is I'm surprised that these are administrative because, I mean, as everybody knows, the context for this, that's a good slide. Thank you for this conversation is that it has been years since a ordinance for short term rentals has been adopted. And the process has been going on for a very long time. So since there is an ordinance that approves short term rentals in Carm, in the inland area, which Carmel Valley is part of, you know, I've always encouraged people, well, then go get a permit. It you're allowed to get a permit, go get a permit. But things have changed a lot since nineteen ninety seven. And so short term rentals have certain characteristics that, for certain particular short term rentals that are perhaps different than what the context was like in nineteen ninety seven. So I've always assumed, and this is my point, that there is some kind of neighborhood participation. If there is an application for a short term rental, if it is the kind of short term rental that is has impacts, whether it's noise or events or parties, that there would be the opportunity for an impacted neighbor to weigh in and and make public comment during the hearing. So my question is, how many of the four approved short term rental permits were done administratively without a hearing? And how many of those twenty five, thank you so much, how many of those twenty five that are current applications are on track to just go through an administrative process versus a planning commission hearing?
So a good question, I think. I don't know if we have all the answers. There's the the existing regulations for transient use of residential property for remuneration in the inland areas or short term rentals requires an administrative permit for for the short term, for a short term rental. And there are some regulations requirements within that that Zoe went through early in her slides that are sort of minimum mandatory requirements. And then the administrative permit process does provide the public process for interested parties to get involved. It's it's a, it's noticed, an administrative permit process is noticed to the public. Saying essentially, we plan to make a decision on this permit by this date unless we get an objection from from someone and then we'll schedule it for a hearing because the administrative approval doesn't happen at a a public hearing. It happens only when there's no objection received. Then a resolution gets approved. So if we get an objection, we have to determine is there objection based on substantial issue? And do we refer it to a hearing? Or do we approve it administratively and offer the ability for anyone who's concerned to appeal that decision of the director of planning or staff level? So in this case, we have objections to the approval of the administrative permit. The administrative permit chapter of our zoning code says those objections get referred to the zoning administrator. So there's been a couple of of short term rentals that were approved administratively with no objection. There's been a couple who that have been referred to the zoning administrator because an objection was received. Whether it was from the neighbor or from an interested community group like CBA is, I don't have answers to, but the, in some cases, CBA has members who are neighbors, but it it, we don't have those, that particular information. So in this case, we asked the zoning administrator to refer this to the planning commission because it really is the issues brought up really have to do with the concern over approving short term rentals based on the existing regulations in place. And I think the ask is not to give an unlimited timeline on that approval or to not approve short term rentals at all under the existing regulations until the update to the short term rental requirement is adopted. So we asked the zoning administrator to refer this to the planning commission so that the planning commission could weigh that policy level issue. And we would probably get back to, depending on the outcome of today's meeting, administrative or zoning administrator level decisions with the ability to appeal until something new is adopted and then we'll follow the new regulations.
So if I may follow up through the chair. So that's helpful and I will, I will ask another question that has to do specifically with what you just stated. But just to go back to the four that have been approved administratively. So what you're saying is there was ample notice to the neighbors. I'm not looking for every permit application to be at a conversation about whether you support or don't support short term rentals. But those approvals, the two at the zoning administrator level and the two that were approved by with an administrative permit without objection, the neighbors who might be impacted by noise, events, or parties all were noticed.
Yes.
Even though it was not a hearing.
Administrative permits get noticed to everyone within three hundred feet at a minimum. They get a notice gets published at the site and in the newspaper.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So then in regards, I I I'm, I do have some questions and I don't know, Chair, if now is the right time or not. But I wanted to just remind my colleagues and I don't know what happened with the Board of Supervisors when they received our letter. But this body did write in July twenty twenty a letter to the Board of Supervisors with some specific questions that they were hoping would be addressed in the environmental analysis for the actual ordinance. I don't know if the board considered what we said. And I don't have a copy of that letter anymore. But I remember that we were concerned about how vacation rentals might impact housing availability, long term housing availability. And so I would be interested as this hearing goes on to hear from from my colleagues about this idea of issuing permits in perpetuity. Prior to that analysis and those questions that we took a lot of time to ask have been addressed in the environmental analysis. I think it is premature. There was another thing that was brought up. Second question I have for the county was folks brought up what we're doing right now with the housing element and the work that we're engaged in right now to add long term units to the housing stock. And I'm just curious if when we do approve a a permit that pulls a unit out of the long term supply, does the state HCD account for that in any way? Or is that just a separate issue completely? And I'll just leave my questions at that for now. If anyone has an answer to either of those or thoughts, something to think about. Thanks.
That's a good question. I see Eric's hand up in his wisdom. He actually asked directly that question when we were in a meeting with them.
Yeah, through the chair, the the issuance of a entitlement for a transient use of residential property does not change the residential use of the property. So there would be not be a loss of a residential property. It continues to exist as a residential structure under the building code. It is an R three occupancy. And until such time that there is a permit to convert it to a non residential use with a different occupancy with removal of the kitchen, so it doesn't serve as a residential unit, then it still retains its residential use. So even if the operator continues to operate for a period of time and then elects not to, they can continue to use that as residence. They can even use it as residence when it's not being operated as a transient use of residential property, which I think is a key word. And, you know, they may elect to to do that over time. New new owner comes in. They they may decide not to operate that transient use under the entitlement processes. So it would be retained as a residential use. Although there is these discussions that the current board is having, it seems to be some policy discussions as you you realize we're in the process of developing ordinances, preparing a environmental impact report related to those ordinances. But staff and the planning commission still has an obligation to consider these projects on the merits of the existing ordinances. So if the planning commission finds that under the current ordinances, that this use being contemplated here is not satisfy either the direct code requirements or is found to be in conflict with an environmental impact, then it has the discretion to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lundquist. Commissioner Daniels?
You know, I have one more question since there's not a hand up about that. So if if let's stick with what Mr. Lundquist just said about identifying an environmental impact. There was some questions in the correspondence about SEQA. And I'm wondering, you know, what does constitute an impact? We were in our, in that letter that we wrote in July twenty twenty as a commission. We asked about housing as one of them, like, you know, is that, would this ordinance have an adverse impact on the housing supply? Is that, is that considered a SEQA question? Or is that, is that considered an environmental impact? Or is that considered some other type of impact?
On on the ordinance that's being contemplated, yes, that will be considered as part of the environmental impact report. Although I think Craig had mentioned, maybe Zoe had mentioned the current ordinance that's currently developed, which this application is filed under that ordinance, there are, there is some language in the ordinance that's specific to environmental impacts. And Craig, I don't know if you want to comment further on that particular element.
Yeah, well, without trying to get too far into the details of SEQA, it is a project that's subject to SEQA. We've found that it's exempt from SEQA as there's no actual physical changes that would impact the environment physically. There's arguments that there's these other impacts for short term rentals that are different than residential. And so the question really is, does the exemption apply? Or is there an exception to the exemption because of a unique or particular impact that that this project may have? And and so I think staff saying there is an exemption that applies and that the exceptions to that exemption haven't haven't been met. So we're suggesting a categorical exemption, but that I think I I think there are some considerations for the new ordinance update that are slightly different than the consideration of individual permits for for, under the existing code requirements.
Thank you very much.
Any other commissioner comments? I see no hands up. Is there an applicant presentation?
The applicant is present. Sean, if you'd like to speak?
Yes, I don't have a a presentation for you, but I do, I thought we were limited to two minutes of speaking, so I'll tell you that what I had. And I, good morning and thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Lesed Loomis, the owner. And thank you for your time and dedication to the county and the planning commission. One of the things I'd like to bring up some points. One, and I think you, we've almost all of these have already been answered, but the, it was approved by Luac four to zero in that meeting without complaint. I don't I don't think there's anybody in the neighborhood, it was posted prior, and I don't think we have any complaint of, of any neighbors. And in fact, uh, our company puts in noise sensors and cameras and at one time uh, one of the neighbors complained about noise and we went and investigated and that actually happened to be another property. And I'm, I'm proud to say that our company under management for ten years and doing rentals with up to a hundred properties in six different counties and four different cities have no complaint, we have no valid complaint for noise, trash, or parking. So I'd just like to present that to you, that there is a way in process to make sure we maintain the uh, community neighborhood. And one of the other things that was presented in the package for you um, from uh, Dick Matthews, they did a survey. And what we find with a lot of these permits or second homes with the ability to have families come and stay and participate in the local small business is that these units help in that way, and typically the rent levels are probably six thousand a month to ten thousand a month. And they don't, those properties in particular, like Leslie Loomis's property that we're talking about today do not provide housing for the low income, but it does provide jobs for like a lot of my staff, because I always promote even my staff to buy properties in the area they live, so their families can become part of the community. And that has occurred of my, my, one of my head of operations just bought a house in Marina. And um, and then my other one, we're planning on getting him a home and he just had a baby that's one years old, so I totally understand how we want to protect the service industry and provide housing for the local people. And there was a study done in the nineties that showed that there was a, an impact of approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars in local small business that's impacted by this industry. So we have here a balance of you know, trying to provide well-paying jobs so people can afford the rents to live locally and provide, and, and establish a community where families can live. So I think that's, we're, we're, we're seeing that right now, so. And that this property in particular uh, has never had a complaint while rented, um. It's always paid its T O T tax per the county code. Um, it meets the title twenty-one recommendations and currently under CEQA is exempt, so all those all those have been met uh, for this permit to be approved. I realize we have we've had this ordinance for twenty-five years and I, I sympathize with you, it's been a long time and um, I've seen a lot of different things happen. I've always said, you know, it'd be nice if the T O T went towards low-income housing, so we have a balance, we, we provide a small amount of uh, we, we, we provide a large amount of small business influx in, you know, going to restaurants in the Carmel Valley or along the coast or, or small businesses and help them establish uh, economic stability in the community. And then there's that balance of, you know, low-income housing and we really need to address that. I've spoken in many cities and counties and said, listen, take a part of that T O T. Because when we talked about development, when I deal with developers, they talk about how there's I was a fireman for twenty-nine years and back about twenty, thirty years ago the state took away funding to the counties and cities. And what, what, what transpired was we raised our permit fees. And it made low-income housing for developers not uh, it, it wasn't something that they wanted to do, right? Because they were like, oh, well, there's no profitability in it. And you know, everybody has to run a business and become profitable, so. The, 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 the effects that we've seen is rental incomes have gone up a lot. And to give you some experience, um, uh, I, I grew up in South Lake Tahoe originally and then lived in Monterey for twelve years. Um, the city of South Lake Tahoe eliminated thirteen hundred permits and they thought that would help the rental and, and my, my business not only deals with month-to-month rental, but it also deals with short-term rental. And what we found was after they eliminated the thirteen hundred permits, rent still increased fifty to a hundred percent in the years following. So it did not help the service industry. And so for me, I sympathize with that idea, but in the reality of what happens, we need to improve the pay of the service industry and we pay very well all of our housekeeping and cleaning and all that stuff, so. I, I know this is kind of, you know, quite a bit, I have been in the industry a long time, I actually invented a patent on automated management. So that's what I've seen happen and I'm just sharing my experience with you and hopefully that will help you in the future to come up with a balance to where we do have this, and I do believe there are certain things that need to be addressed. When you develop a plan, that you have to put the homeowners and the managers responsible to maintain, you know, the quiet neighborhood, no events. And you make them accountable and they self-police, and that's why we, we actually have units now that have a, a noise sensor and it actually tells the guests they're being loud immediately. Immediately when they're loud and it's like as much as a vacuum, that's, that's how strict we are and we penalize immediately. And I think if we come up with it, an ordinance that is, is strong and we weed out the bad apples, I think the community will be stronger all the way around. And, and that's my personal opinion, I didn't, I didn't, I only thought I had two minutes, but since I can do a little more, I just wanted to share those, those aspects that I see in the industry and I would be happy to be part of any committee that you develop to help them understand that, because I've seen the industry. I was in the industry when we used to fax. We used to fax back and forth the contracts and they'd send a personal check. And you know, really this industry, I think it gets a bad name, but it's really about a lot of families going on vacation that are happy, that provide to the community, buy ice cream at the local little store in Carmel Valley and do that type of thing. That's what I do too, and we have an office in the valley. And, and I hope to see that, you know, that it'd be a positive impact to the community and not negative. And, and on those merits, one of the interesting things that have occurred that's very impactful to the environment, our company has put in a hundred and forty kilowatts of solar in all the properties, including my own. We have three, three electric cars, we, we, our company runs, our operations is fully electric, so it has a low empire, we're actually carbon negative. And I always promote and Leslie Loomis, this property owner, due to her rental income of what she's received and she projected, she put in a twelve K kilowatt system that helps the environment. And, and so we, I take this very wholeheartedly, I drive an electric car and I believe in protecting the environment and having a balance within the community. And, and so she put that in, she actually is doing a couple little things right now to get everything electric, so it'd be completely carbon neutral. But she needs the funding from the rent to be able to pay for this, so that's, I think it's very important and I know it's a, 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 an interesting circumstance. And then the SOP, when they referenced um, the case, the case that was comparable was ninety-foot light stands in a residential area. And that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about residential use on a vacation with a family. With, you know, eight bedrooms or, uh, eight occupants with four bedrooms and it says one point seven acres, but Leslie told me it was two point nine acres, so it's a very large property. And I do respect the community, I was a fireman for twenty-nine years, I backfilled for the fires that were in Monterey and been on strike teams myself, so I always have had the community in my interest. Uh, and there has been no complaints and I told you about the systems that we put in place to do that, and I think if a new ordinance is established, it should really address those things. And I've seen that happen and it's helped, it's helped with neighborhoods and so I'd, I'd love to be, participate in that. And again, I thank you for your time today, I know you spend a lot of time, I've been on a lot of boards myself. And uh, you know, it's very time-consuming, the reading and everything. And uh, I appreciate your time and, and Dick Matthews did put a point in there on how it doesn't affect the lower income. Now, there is one, one, one thing that we've seen, that I've seen kind of this industry morph into, because of the A D U, you could have a renter in the A D U and then they oversee the rental of the vacation and then it gives you an extra li- layer of of, you know, observance of the property while it's rented. And I think it's a great idea, we're, we're, we're starting to implement it in Tahoe because we're, we're, we're asking owners, hey, put an A D U and then you can get a, you can get a, what do they call this? A hosted rental. So that would be something else that I could, this is a great idea, it's A D Us, somebody gets low rent, if they make sure that they get no complaints, then they have a low rent and they help they help protect the community and they're part of the community. So those are, those are things that help the low income, so there are solutions to these things, all right? And I'm sorry, I'm a little winded. I appreciate your time and because it does not go against CEQA and it meets the current cut title twenty-one, I request that you approve this, this permit today and you have a wonderful day. Take care.
Thank you, Sean. Does the applicant accept any conditions? All the conditions listed?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that you understand that, uh, we wanted to comply with all the regulations, so we applied for the permit because we want to do things right, that's important to my husband and I, just. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loomis. All right. I see no commissioner hands up. So let's go for
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, uh, uh, there was a letter that it sounded like had been referenced by the um, applicants, um, by Dick Matthews, I didn't receive that, is that something that was sent to us?
I don't know if I received that from Sean, if I did, I apologize, I'll look through my emails right now, um. I don't remember.
No, I'm sorry, it, it was in the Sean, the, the lawyer's letter. Colons, it was, it was referenced in that letter, you'll see where it talks about a study that was done on um, low-income housing and how that affects that.
All right, thank you, um. Any, let's see, public comments, I see no hands up. Do we, uh, Mr. Stein?
Yes, uh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, my name is Chuck Stein and I'm in support of the planning commission approving this permit. I have also applied for the same administrative permit. The administrative hearing to consider my application was scheduled for February first, but was pushed to a public hearing because of a similar letter from Attorney Rosenthal and the Carmel Valley Association. Neither letter had any substantive complaints about my particular property. Instead, both letters raised objections about the issuing of the S T R permits in general. I also have approval from the Carmel Valley Lua and a recommendation to approve from the planning department. My opinion is that the Carmel Valley Association and Attorney Rosenthal's arguments are in large part based on wrong assumptions about CEQA and S T R use and effects. Their efforts should instead be focused on working towards making the new S T R regulation reasonable and successful. Should you approve the Story Road permit? I ask that the planning commission establish a precedent against misdirected complaints like Attorney Rosenthal's objections so that the planning department does not have to elevate each S T R permit application to a public hearing each time a similar objection letter is received. Failure to do so would result in a waste of time and resources for the planning department and the applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Uh, Mr.
How do I put up my hand?
Um, I think you will assume your hands up, but you can open the reactions tab on your Zoom platform. It's like a little smiley face. And then click the raise hand icon. Uh, but I think we are aware that you want to speak and the chair will call on you when, when it's your turn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal, we can hear you, can, you can hear us. Now, hold on, I have someone else ahead of you. I'll, I'll call on you in a moment. Mr. Hale?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and
I'm sorry, before you start, we do have a two-minute time limit, okay?
Has that just recently come? Um, that's a new one. Okay, I can be quick. Um, I'd like to go back to um, the good comments by uh, Ms. Zep about in the presentation of this project. And I just want to add that Carmel Valley is not uh, necessarily against each individual project. But in the letter that I sent that um, Ms. Zep referred to, there's a map of the region where Story Road property is and there are now seven operating in that area, which is way over the six percent recommended in the new draft ordinance. And so the reason we're here at the planning commission is whereas each individual applicant like Ms. Loomis um, is trying to play by the rules. The fact is that the cumulative effect is a, a, administratively permitting more than are going to be allowed by the new draft ordinance, so that doesn't seem right to us. The other thing that she made was a point that uh, um, half a percent of the dwellings are approved, uh, of the twenty-five applications. What that belies is the three hundred and four T O T payers. Three hundred and four, that again is just over six percent of those five thousand residences are already operating as vacation rentals. So the numbers are, are higher than one would think, but based on the presentations we've heard today. Um, uh, Mr. Lundquist was talking about the uh, occupancy factor of one of these properties and what I'm curious about is if the property leaves transient use and returns to the rental market, does that provide a credit vis a vis Reno? These are just some of my questions. Um, the other question I wanted to ask is what constitutes an event? At one of these homes? What makes it an event? Um, eight people show up and then there's, they're at a wedding and they bring twelve more people over for cocktails before the rehearsal dinner, is that an event? Does that need a special event permit? Um, and the local manager, I would ask Mr. Ward, how many properties his company is managing in Carmel Valley at this time? So that if he got a call from each one, would he be able to respond? And those are my questions, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Oh, would you like me to respond?
Not at this time, but you can, you can, you can take notes on the questions and, and maybe we'll come back to you once the commission has a chance. Ms. Walton?
You're on mute. Uh, okay, you can hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm uh, Chris Walton, uh, I'm a C V A member and a former uh, president and uh, I've been following, as you um, may know and see me here before uh, since two thousand and fifteen, the short-term rental saga. And of course, we're still without uh, an ordinance and um, one of the real problems uh, is you know, there's a fundamental assumption, which I think needs to be questioned, and that is that these S T Rs are no differ- different uh, than uh, residential zoning. And um, that in case is not true, most of these residential uh, homes prior to becoming S T Rs have been family homes and haven't had the density, so there is an increase in traffic, water, uh, sewage and so forth. And uh, they are commercial uh, entities. And so what in effect has been happening is that there's zoning uh, to uh, commercial uses uh, in residential areas without changing the zoning. And I think that the granting of these applications at this point, particularly in view of the fact that um, uh, the ordinance is being developed, uh, people are receiving these uh, permits with um, in perpetuity, which means no matter what happens, they'll continue to have this function, which is another major concern, because as they come in in greater numbers, by the time we get to e- even a cap, we may have already exceeded it. So I think it's really, really important that um, all of these be uh, brought to the planning commission and some kind of cap uh, be put on and uh, that there be no in perpetuity until we have a final ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. All right, next would be Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, am I on?
You're on.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of the, of the mission. Um, I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Hale or Ms. Watson, uh, Walton talked about. Uh, I want to go directly to the issue is uh, whether or not these administrative permits should be issued without some type of additional environmental review. And I would like the uh, the commission to consider uh, continuing the hearing until such time as an initial study is undertaken uh, to determine what, if any, uh, significant impacts may be and then consider mitigations relating thereto. Um, in, in fact, I think it would be wise to consider uh, a master uh, initial study for the Carmel Valley Village or the nine-three-nine-two-four uh, area code. Uh, just as uh, Mr. Hale uh, stated, uh, the number of units uh, far exceed what uh, the planning uh, the number of units uh, far exceed what uh, the planning department is uh, stating in their report. Uh, my paper, uh, my comment letter goes through the environmental impacts associated with STRs. And I present documentary evidence uh, uh, um, on four through seven of my attachments on uh, statements made by the planning department and uh, uh, the uh assessment that's being undertaken by the um, draft EIR now on the uh, uh, for the consideration of the revised ordinance. Bottom line is there are cumulative impacts associated with that. There is unusual circumstances. There is environmental impact and none of them really have been addressed. As Ms. Daniels noted, uh, the ordinance is 1997. There hasn't, if you look at the initial study that adopted it, it's uh, you know, it's quite vacant of anything of importance. And the changed circumstances now, what we're seeing, um, you know, mandates further review uh, of these administrative permits for STRs um, until they're approved and approved on a limited basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Are there any other hands up for public comment? I see none. Do we have any writ up? Mr. Hale, I believe you spoke already.
I did. I'm going for another round if it's available.
Uh, do we have any written comments?
Madam Chair, if he's the applicant's agent, I think he has an opportunity to respond to um.
He is not. Mr. Hale is not the applicant's agent. Sean is the applicant's agent.
Through the chair, we have no written correspondence for this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Sean, there were several points raised. And as the applicant's agent, either you or the applicant herself, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to answer. We have about six properties in the valley. And John, I'm not sure if that's correct. Under the 6%, under the current board, they they've approved the 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 draft ordinance that currently is being talked about says 6%. That would mean there would be 300 rentals in the Carmel Valley. And currently, that's not the case. Uh, in reference to that, um. And I, uh, we run six, but some are uh, long term, some are short term. So that's it. Not very many. Um, and the other thing is, you know, I understand that this ordinance, I get that it was established in 1997, but the applicant today under the current law meets all the standards. So I I understand you want to change the law. That could take three years. So after she put in her solar and filed the permits and paid the the fees, shouldn't she be allowed to get her permit under the current law? I mean, we can't say what's the law going to be. That's a draft ordinance and that doesn't, that is not the law we're currently in. So I think today, the planning commission needs to make a tough decision. And this decision, I believe, under the current law is that she gets her permit because she meets all the requirements.
Don, please, if you can limit your responses for your comments to actual responses, okay? We don't usually have a back and forth, but this is one of those subjects that we want to make sure we hear everyone's side.
Thank you very much.
Um, and then I see no other public comment. Mr. Hale, I know you had one last comment. Can you keep it very, very short?
Absolutely. Uh, no, no problem, Chair. Um, the 304 operating TOT paying properties is a fact that's established from the tax collector's office that we received data from. Um, that's recently been updated as of December 1st, that that many people are paying. So if you notice that there are 304 paying TOT, but only four of 25 applicants have been approved, we aren't getting people applying for permits. Why? Permits cost $8,000 to $10,000. A lot of people are operating things that that's like a major part of their income for the year. So those are kind of, that's an issue I think that needs to be addressed by the planning commission. The biggest thing, though, is that when you have in a neighborhood of 70 or 80 homes of a street, a a unique neighborhood, and seven or eight of them, the question becomes how many is is acceptable? How many are acceptable? And then the third is an enforcement issue. Because most of these places to do business rent for less than seven days. And if anybody's going to be honest, they're not, they're already in violation of their permit with today's ad and Airbnb. So are they going to start renting for just seven days or another property that was approved has started just doing four rentals a month to try and cover that? So those are big issues for our neighborhoods here in Carmel Valley. Um, that mean each individual permit where it is acceptable and by the rules, the system's permitting is basically turning us into a hotel neighborhood area, generating TOT income that's non-budgeted in the county budget and spent not back here, not as Sean suggests into affordable housing in our area, but spent on other projects in the county. So we're like a, uh, we're generating income as we turn into uh, almost an unchecked little Sonoma County. Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. I'm going to bring it back to the commission now, and I see Commissioner Roberts' hand up.
Yes, I just was going to ask for a point order and allowing public comment. Again, I'm concerned that we're uh, you know, that we need to be fair to everybody and we've got more items that I know people are going to have comments on. I don't want to open it up multiple times. Um, I, but I would like staff to comment on um, the the statistics, statistics we heard about um the TOT in Carmel Valley and how many there are. Um, and obviously it allows staff a chance to respond to all that.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Uh, Mr. Spencer, are you ready to respond to that or do you need to do some digging?
I I will need to do a little bit of digging. I think there there are different metrics that we're looking at. The metric that uh, has been referenced in public comment is is the number of properties paying TOT through um through information we have available that has been tracking trade, uh, short term rentals for a long time. So that is an actual um piece of information. It, the matter of what is active on a regular basis, what is, well, you know, the long term short, short term rentals or or the major short term rentals or what is, you know, occasional short term rentals. We don't know have all that detail. What we provided in our presentation was the number of homes per census in Carmel Valley and the number of applications on file approved and not yet approved. So those are two different metrics with two different outcomes and one, one is very easy with the permits approved or not approved. The other, there's probably more detailed information about each one of those properties that we haven't had a chance to look at yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
If I can add to that.
No, I'm sorry. This is Commissioner's comment only. So if every, every member of the public, please put yourselves on mute.
I think that might have been Eric.
Oh, sorry, Eric.
Eric, Eric.
I, I, I wanted to
direction, but if if I can, I can um, add, add to it. I do have some data that I can share with you. But I I would add that um, to Mr. Iles' point is that this is a collection of data that we do receive through post compliance, which is a subsidiary of Granicus. And it only captures in mind's data that is available on certain sites. So if there are advertisements on other sites, perhaps that are individually held or that are through word of mouth, it does not capture this data. So right now, in Carmel Valley Master Plan, there are 5,033 residential properties, residential homes. So 6% of that would be 306. I have my math is correct. We just do that to confirm. Five oh, three, three times point the six. Yes, it actually ends up being three, 302. And so right now, through our data as a result of June of 2022, we have indication of 129 being advertised. So again, that is you know, not a reflection entirely of those that are out there, but of those that are being advertised on the seven websites. So there is quite the possibility that there are others out there that we are not aware of. But of those currently being advertised, that is only 2.6%. But I would also like to add that this is these are theoretical percentages based on an unknown ordinance that isn't in effect. And so right now, we do not have any of these provisions at play. And so the contemplation of of this, in my opinion, is premature.
Thank you, Mr. Lenkis. Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. Uh, one question and then some comments. Um, in regards to the request for an initial study for the Carmel Valley Master Plan area, the environmental analysis is on track to be completed when for the actual ordinance, the larger ordinance? I think that's
Have a draft out, if I may, Craig, sorry.
Yeah.
What I, we made, we hope to have a draft out um, here in a couple of months, April and May. And then um, it will be out for circulation for the 45 day review period. Uh, as you all realize, at the close of that review period, we're required to respond to comments and prepare a final impact report or perhaps recirculate if new information is is presented that warrants recirculation. Really, the hope and the board's direction to the Department of Housing and Urban Development is to get this ordinance and the necessary SEQA document to them within this calendar year. They're, they are really pushing to get this, knowing all of these discussions are being had. Um, and in fact, there, there may be other discussions that are occurring in the interim um, to to kind of propel these, these policy decisions in advance of consideration of the ordinances and the necessary environmental documentation. And partially because there's no surety that the full board will end up certifying or adopting those ordinances. So there are some interim um, steps that may be had. And so I would um, advise the planning commission as the board directs us in future meetings of the planning commission, but also advise the public to please um, pay attention to upcoming board agendas, um, because there may be some of those uh, directive coming to the department in some upcoming meetings.
So would you say um, through the chair that the analysis that's being requested for the Carmel Valley Master Plan area would be included in that SEQA?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And so we will definitely be on the lookout for that. Um. I do have some just thoughts about how we proceed today. I think this entirely rests on us that we're having this conversation right now about um, an individual application in the context of a a larger situation where there's been an ordinance that's been in the works for a very, very, very long time. And what we might be approving today um, would benefit from answers to questions that the ordinance will provide. And so that is really unfortunate. But I also think that if we have a zoning ordinance from 1997, that this application um, it allows this application to move forward. We can't punish this one individual applicant. Um, but that said, I would like to know from staff what the opportunities, what the options are that we have. Sorry, my dogs are fighting. Please stop it. What are the op, uh, what, what, what options do we have at our disposal today to limit the lifespan of such a decision that's made? Because um, it really, I am concerned about the cumulative impacts that have been brought up in public comment today. And I'm and I, and I, and I have all the questions that hopefully will be answered in the final ordinance regarding impacts. So um, what can we do today to support this applicant in moving forward, but not not approving an application that's in perpetuity because of all the questions that are before us today?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of options. Obviously, it's a discretionary decision of the planning commission. Um, you to approve or or conditionally approve or deny. Um, you could there, there are in my mind, some obvious options. You could you could direct environmental review to occur and not concur with the exemption. You could apply a condition that is a permit expiration condition that would provide a permit for them to operate as a short term rental for a specified period of time, at which time they'd need to renew their permit. Or the permit would expire. And they'd no longer have the the permission to use the property for short term rental. Um, and there's probably some, a number of other options that I am not um, thinking of at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Commissioner Daniels, is that enough for now as an answer to your comments?
One, one follow up question, because I know one of the obstacles to people coming in and getting permits is the cost. And so um, I'm curious if there was a permit expiration condition, what that would mean for this applicant, if they have to, i- if there's a legal pathway for them to extend their permit, do they go through the entire process again? Is that something we can just table this application later? Can you take the dogs outside, please? Thank you so much. Um, is this, um, I'm just looking for the mechanism uh, to not punish this individual applicant further. And we want, if there is an opportunity to come in and get a permit, we want people to come in and get permits. So um, I would um, because of this very conversation that we're happening right, having right now. So this leads me back to the original comments that I made about approving things administratively. I like the opportunity that we're really engaging on these very critical issues impacting communities like Carmel Valley. So um, but my question about putting in a condition of permit expiration condition, it it really would be in my mind until um, uh, a point in time when an ordinance, um, when the environmental analysis has been completed for the overall, you know, or until which time there is an ordinance in place. I don't know. I'm open to suggestions. I know Commissioner Roberts has her hand up perhaps as well, but just those are some of the things I'm thinking about as follow up.
I was going to add uh, as well that Mr. Spencer said that those were off the top of his head ideas, but there could be more. He just needed a little time to consider. Perhaps the staff needs a little more time to consider. And I also wanted to check with staff on what were all the written comments for this item? Because I feel like I might be missing one. And therefore I just wanted to double check and since I want to make sure I have all the written comments, I, Sean of Property Management Company X representing applicant Loomis mentioned a letter from someone and I'm, and he says it's referred to in another letter. And so now I'm very curious about that original letter as well. So I feel like I, I, I just want to make sure I'm crossing all my Ts, dotting all my Is, reading everything that there is to read on comments. And therefore, if we could, I don't know if we need to take a moment, let staff put together the, the package of all these written letters, written correspondence, as well as putting together a list of all the possible options to address this item. Does this call for tabling the item? I, I don't want to rush through an analysis of options and miss something that might be the best fit in this case. And my last concern was this in perpetuity issue because if we were to go with the expiration date, then does that mean that when, if the opportunity, the opportunity when, if the opportunity, the opportunity presents for the applicant to reapply or extend the permit, does the time now used as a short term, as a permitted short term rental apply to that new time limit, if there is a time limit, when the ordinance finally comes out? So there, I just feel like I have too many questions right now, but I'd like to start with all the written comments that might have been floating around, around this issue. And since I haven't, I, I, I feel like there's one thing I don't have and I just want to make sure. Yes.
Um, I do want to say that I just resent an email with, um, additional correspondence for a couple of items on today's agenda. I'm not sure if you guys received that email. I was receiving some bounce backs yesterday. So, um, I just want to make sure that you guys did receive, um, that email with additional correspondence, including correspondence for this item.
Just got it. I did not get that email previously.
Maybe for the record, Chair, it'd be helpful if Ms. Magana listed the correspondence received. So we're clear that you've all received what you need to.
Thank you, yes.
Sure, I can send an email with that list.
No, I was hoping you could just read them out. So it's clear for the public right now. What's been received and what's been sent to the commissioners.
Okay, so just now was an email with correspondence for a letter from Commissioner Deal with P up for PLN two, two, zero, zero, nine, zero. A letter from CVA for PLN two, two, zero, one, three, four. A letter from Richard Rosenthal for PLN two, two, zero, one, three, four. And a letter from Drake Sean for PLN two, two, zero, zero, nine, zero. And a PowerPoint presentation for PLN two, two, zero, zero, nine, zero. And that was the email distributed just now. Um, prior to that was an email uh, distributed at two twenty five yesterday. Um, and this is a letter for PLN two, two, zero, zero, nine, zero. And this is the letter from Sarah Clark.
So I think, have, have we received any new comments on PLN two, two, zero, one, three, four, this current item, Loomis? We, there were three comment letters that we received that we forwarded to the commission for this project. There was a letter from Richard Rosenthal. There was a letter from Carmel Valley Association. And there was a letter from, um, an attorney with the Short Term Rental Vacation Alliance, I think. Um, and those were the three that were distributed for this item.
Okay, and those were now just resent in this new email, correct?
Some, some of the ones that were just listed are for the next agenda item. To the zero, zero, nine, zero item, that's for the bridge rails, that's the next agenda item. This is for PLN two, two, zero, one, three, four. Loomis.
Of the email that Ms. Magana just sent, there are five attachments. Are the three pertaining to this item included in those five attachments, Ms. Magana? All three. I think we only have two. But I'm just double checking.
Uh, I need to double check.
Please.
Give me a moment here.
Madam Chair, while we're resolving, while we're resolving the correspondence issue, um, I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Daniel's concerns. I, I share all the same concerns, especially about the imper- perpetuity aspect of this potential permit. Um, I wanted to hear from County Council on the legalities of conditioning a permit, um, expiration, and if that's something that, you know, I, that, in my mind, that does seem like the right answer at this point, but, um, I would love to hear from County Council on her opinion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Roberts. If the commission is interested in going that direction, I would request that you continue this matter to a date certain, so we can fully look into that issue. And if it is possible, work on the appropriate condition language. I wouldn't recommend doing this on the fly today if this is the direction the commission wants to go.
And, um, as I commented on Mr. Spencer's response to Commissioner Daniels, he listed a couple of options and said there could be others. So I don't want to even decide that that's the way we want to go without hearing what all those other options could be. Commissioner Daniels?
If I remember from the slides that we saw in the original presentation, there are, there are many others that are in process, maybe twenty eight or something like that, applications. And so this question would apply to all of them. So I would like to make a motion that we continue this item for both County Council to weigh in on a permit expiration or sunset date. And at that point, staff could also provide an analysis of what the various options may be. Because this is not a one off situation. In, in the time that we are going to take to finally complete the ordinance, we will have these applications. And I just want to remind people, we've encouraged people to apply. Like, we're trying to get a handle on short term rentals. And so, you know, where there was an avenue, folks were asked to apply. So if that's the case, then I believe we really do need to, um, to address this, these questions that came up today. And I would be comfortable moving forward if there were a permit expiration or sunset date. And so I'd like to know what those options are.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Before we entertain a second on your motion, Commissioner Gonzalez had raised his hand. I'd like to hear his comments.
Yes, I, I guess a question from, for staff, but have, have any open ended administrative permits for sure, for short rentals being denied in the past five or ten years? And I guess that's just a basic question.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Mr. Spencer?
I don't think that any have been denied. We haven't done, we haven't processed very many of them. And the ones that would be considered for denial would probably end up before the zoning administrator, planning commission. And in my memory, I don't think we have had any that were denied. We've had, we've had more than one referred to the planning commission. And some that are pending decision. So it's not out of the realm of possibility, but I don't think we have very many on either side of approvals or denials.
Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for any other final comments from my fellow commissioners.
There, there have only been, I mean, again, we have three hundred or so, however many are operating, but we have not had applications, just in light of the last comment. There have been, what, less than a handful of applications since nineteen ninety seven? Is that something like that?
I believe there's somewhere around twenty five now that have been approved. And it's in part due to the board's direction to not enforce the short term rental operators until such time that the ordinances are being considered. But last year that changed. We did receive direction from the board to proactively enforce short term rentals within District Five. And breaking that into different categories, first category, being those that aren't paying transient occupancy tax and that those that have other health and safety violations. And then secondly, those that are paying T O T that do not have the current permits, which is why you're seeing a, a trend of new applications being received now. And as, as I mentioned earlier, there may be other actions of the board that we'll see in the near future related to um, our code compliance efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Lundquist. Commissioner Roberts.
I just wanted to second the motion, um, but also say to the applicants and future applicants that I sincerely appreciate them going through this process that is a legal process um, that they have the right to. And I, you know, I empathize with the fact that we're holding up this thing that we have encouraged. But if we put a date certain, I hope that we have a real answer and a real path forward for applicants wanting to make their, um, properties, rental homes in the future legally.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. I see no other hands up from the board.
Do we have a date certain? The staff has a, have a date?
Mr. Spencer, can you let us know what timeline is realistic for staff?
I, I don't think that this discussion will take us long. Um, I do think that the, the time limits is probably the right direction to go. And we could probably be back in two weeks for that first meeting in March.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. This is coming back, date certain, first meeting in March. Can we take a roll call vote?
Sure, for the record, um, March eighth would be the first meeting in March, March eighth.
Perfect, thank you.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Spaced out there for a minute. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
And Chair Mosalvi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific, thank you. All right, I'm looking to my fellow commissioners. Are we needing a little stretching break or? Yes, all right, let's take ten minutes? Ten minutes, everybody go do a lap somewhere. Thank you all. Thank you.
Condition thirty requires a general plan amendment to reclassify parcels A, B, and C, and D to open space. On residential lots twenty-two, the northern half of the property will be reclassified to residential low density, and for the residential lot twenty-nine, the southern half of the property will be reclassified to residential rural density. No changes to the land use or zoning are proposed for phase two on the or the inclusionary housing lot F, which are the white voids on the map. This one, this one. Amendments for phase two will be considered prior to filing the final map for phase two. Condition thirty-seven requires rezoning of sectional district map section twenty-one seventeen A. This rezoning requires a B six overlay to prevent further subdivision of the parcels, and also with this, remove the R A Z overlay, which is a designation no longer in effect. Consistent with the land use and designation change, the zoning all will be changed. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the board of supervisors consider the certified final environmental impact report for the September Ranch subdivision, and adopt a resolution to amend the two thousand and ten general plan to reclassify the land use designation of parcels A, B, C, and D to open space and rezone to add B six overlay district and remove the R A Z zoning overlay district. Staff concludes presentation and is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Commissioners, any comments or questions? None yet. Oh, Commissioner Roberts.
Sorry, I have so much, yeah, my microphone's on, so much sun coming in, I can't see the screen anymore. I, I think that this is staff or county-driven amendment. Do I have that right? This is just essentially a housekeeping?
Yes, it's a condition, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, it was required as a condition for the subdivision that they request the amendments and that we process them, and that's what we're doing.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I see none. We have to open this to public comments still, correct, Mr. Spencer?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, I see no hands up from public comments. Is there anything in writing?
We have no additional correspondence for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Back to the commission. No questions, no comments. No public comment. Do we have to ask if the applicant accepts any conditions, even though this is about conditions?
Yeah, there are no conditions. It's a recommendation of the board.
So shall we entertain a motion? My fellow commissioners. I will make the motion. And I'll read it from the screen if Ms. Garcia will put it back up. All right, so motion to adopt the resolution recommending that the board of supervisors consider the final, the certified final E I R for the September Ranch subdivision, adopt a resolution recommending the board of supervisors amend the Monterey County general plan, two thousand and ten general plan to reclassify the land use designations of parcel A and D, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, rezone parcels A through D to open space and rezone the residential parcels to add B six overlay and remove R A Z zoning overlay.
Chair Monsalves, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Getzelman. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Daniels?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
And Chair Monsalve?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now, agenda item number five, P L N two-two-zero-zero-nine-zero.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you see my screen all right?
We can.
Thank you. I'm Phil Angelo, and I'll be presenting staff's report on the California Department of Transportation Garapata Creek Bridge Project, P L N two-two-zero-zero-nine-oh. The project is located at Garapata Creek Bridge near post-mile marker sixty-three on Highway One, and the scope would be to replace the existing bridge rails. The bridge is one of seven historic bridges in Big Sur, six of which are identified for replacement rails in the Caltrans Tier One E I R prepared for the project. However, only the Garapata Creek Bridge rails are proposed at this time. Highway One was built in the nineteen thirties and was the first scenic highway in California's scenic highway system. The project is located within the Big Sur coastal land use plan, which includes a key policy to maintain and enhance the highway's aesthetic beauty and protect its primary function as a recreational route. These are the existing rails, and this is the proposed replacement rails from outside of the bridge. The existing rails are heavily deteriorated, and Caltrans' current structural engineering analysis is that they aren't safe at any speed. Due to their advanced deterioration, Caltrans Division of Maintenance reports from as early as two thousand and nine recommended their replacement. Periodic spall and patch repairs appear to have been done on the rails in different sections, but they don't appear to have been successful in stopping the deterioration. Oh, I'm sorry. The Manual for Assessing Safety Hardware, also known as M A S H, is a set of design and testing parameters for bridge rails and other highway safety devices. Throughout this process, Caltrans have maintained that compliance with M A S H is mandatory without exception. Staff's analysis is that this is Caltrans' internal policy, and they're unwilling to consider an exception for a non-compliant M A S H rail at Garapata Creek Bridge, as it would jeopardize the health and safety of drivers and passengers utilizing the highway. One of the project alternatives analyzed in the review process was reducing the speed limit to forty-five miles an hour at the bridge. Reduced speed would allow consideration of what M A S H calls a T R two rail, such as the Texas C four eleven, as opposed to what is proposed, which is a T R four rail. Tier two rails are rails that comply with M A S H but are rated to be safe at a lower speed and have taller openings, which would more closely match the aesthetic of the existing rails. Caltrans conducted a bidirectional speed survey in two thousand and nineteen and determined that the operating speed that which drivers are actually going at Garapata Creek is fifty-eight miles an hour, and they therefore couldn't make the findings necessary to reduce the speed limit at that location. Staff are recommending a condition requiring that a traffic assessment and speed study be prepared for any of the other five bridge rail projects discussed in the project's E I R, so that use of the T R two rail can be considered should those projects come forward. The Big Sur coastal land use plan recognizes Big Sur's outstanding beauty and its great benefit to the state and the nation. L U P policy three point two point one prohibits all public and private development visible from Highway One and other major public viewing areas, the critical view shed, to protect Big Sur's scenic resources. However, L U policy, L U P policy three point two point five point C point one does allow an exception to this policy for road safety improvements, and indicates that guard rail should be of a design complementary to the rural character and setting of Big Sur. The proposed rails are slightly bulkier than the existing ones, with narrower openings, a thicker base and top beam, and intermediate support pilasters. These changes make views through the rail less accessible. Project was referred to the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, who recommended approval with changes, indicating that the replacement rails obscure the view shed, and that the opening should be widened to the original height and width. The reduced opening width is driven by the dimensional requirements of the M A S H standards. If a vehicle were to collide with a rail, a larger opening window can act as a catch point, which hooks a car's bumper and increases the severity of accidents. The taller base height of the new rail increases the likelihood that a modern vehicle traveling at high speed will be redirected back into the lane after hitting the rail, and the reduced opening sizes mitigate the potential for catch points. Caltrans has designed the railings to match the existing rails as closely as possible while adhering to current M A S H standards by beveling the rail openings by one point five inches in order to maximize visual access, using a rounded top pilaster is consistent with the original pile rail with a similar vertical seam, locating major pilasters above the support superstructure, maintaining the same forty-two inch height of the original rails and utilizing grooves at the top and the bottom of the rail. The bridge is individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places and California Register of Historic Resources for its association with the highway beautification movement and as an example of reinforced concrete bridge design from the nineteen twenties and thirties. Its character-defining features are its use of concrete, open spandrel, parabolic arch, T-beam approach spans, cantilevered walkway, and decorative concrete railings. The project would impact character-defining feature, the railings, with impacts to the design, workmanship, and feeling of the bridge. However, the bridge would retain its overall integrity. It would remain able to convey its significance and still be eligible for both the state and national registers. To ensure that the color of the new rails matches the existing ones as much as possible, staff are also recommending a condition that a color and material mockup be done for the new rails. Bridge is also a contributing feature to the Carmel-Sansimian Highway Historic District, along with the six other reinforced concrete bridges on Highway One. The district is composed of two hundred and forty-one distinct elements, primarily engineering features on or adjacent to the highway, including culverts, fountains, stone walls, and the Big Sur arches. The district is eligible for listing under the National Register of Historic Places, also for its association with the highway beautification movement, and as an example of a distinctive method of construction, principally the extensive use of handcrafted masonry walls and other similar features like these arcades. Essential to the district is its discontinuity. The highway itself isn't part of the district due to numerous alterations that have occurred on the highway since its original construction. Instead, the boundary is around each of the individual two hundred and forty-one features. The historic bridges part of the district have distinct designs, such as Malpasso Creek Bridge, which has gabled rail openings as opposed to Garapata's round ones, and the more extreme example, which is Wildcat Creek Bridge, which is the only closed spandrel bridge and has no rail openings. As the bridge will remain a historic resource able to convey its significance, and the district is fundamentally discontinuous, discontinuous, the project wouldn't adversely affect the historic district. And the Historic Resources Review Board considered the project at their January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting and recommended approval subject to the previously discussed color mockup and traffic assessment conditions. Inclusion of the not-yet-proposed replacements on the other five historic Big Sur arches in the Tier One E I R and historical reports has brought into focus how the decision on this project could influence the decision-making processes on other bridges. Staff's analysis is that it should not, and that all of the same questions that have been raised in this review process will still be relevant in the consideration of each bridge rail. Each rail will have its own coastal development permit review, which will be based on the circumstances specific to each particular project. Prior to this hearing, staff received three public comment letters which were distributed to the planning commission for consideration. A comment letter from Martha Deal is a member of the public, expressing concern on the project and requesting that the planning commission deny the project. A letter from Shoot Mahaly and Weinberg, representing Keep Big Sur Wild, which has concerns regarding the project, and a letter from the California Coastal Commission staff encouraging additional analysis of alternatives, particularly reducing the speed. Staff are recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution certifying that they've considered the environmental document, which would be the Tier One and Tier Two E I R and NEPA categorical exclusion, adopt a statement of overriding considerations, approve the combined development permit to allow the replacement project, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Staff are also recommending that the county standard condition number three, requiring work be halted if previously unknown archaeological resources are uncovered during construction be added, as this condition is mentioned in finding number eight, evidence A of the draft resolution, but not included in the conditions attached to the draft resolution sent to the planning commission. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Fellow commissioners, any initial thoughts, comments, questions? Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you, Chair Monsalve. A couple questions I have, let's see, looking for. Okay, I did, I did get a chance to read Sean Drake's letter. I hadn't realized we got that, so I'm glad we went through that exercise in the last, in the last item that we discussed correspondence. Is it staff's impression, I'm reading the sentence in particular that says, let's see, "We continue to encourage Caltrans to fully evaluate the feasibility of this approach." They're talking about a reduction in speed limit. Somewhere in the letter, I feel like it indicated that there would be a, a that there would be an appeal. Here it is. Yeah, so, "We continue to encourage Caltrans to fully evaluate the feasibility of this approach before the county takes action on the C D P application, where any such county action can be appealed to the coastal commission." I just, if I read that correctly, it, it seems to imply to me that there will be an appeal by the coastal commission themselves if, if we don't really take a stab at pursuing what alternatives might be before us before taking action on this item. Just throwing that out there, I guess that's not really a question. So in that, in regards to that, my question would be perhaps answered by the applicant, by Caltrans later on. I'm, I'm, I'm confused as to why the reduction in speed limit, which would allow for the other bridge design that's more, more resembles the current bridge, is not a possibility, especially on a road like Highway One, where we reduce speeds as we approach turns and other parts of the coast. I don't believe it's a continuous fifty-five, the entire stretch of the coastline, because I know when you approach some of the more curvy portions of that road, we do have speed reductions. So that's my, my question that I'm sure could get addressed, not necessarily by staff right now, but when the applicant does bank their presentation. And that's what I have at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniel. Commissioner Getzelman?
Sorry.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. I wanted to ask about, I wanted to ask about the the significant unavoidable impacts and related to the visual impacts, and the fact that we need to make a statement of overriding conditions about that, and maybe when Caltrans has the opportunity to speak, I'd like to know more about, I guess, the history of the safety of that bridge. Obviously, you know, if Caltrans deems that it needs reinforcement, I trust the engineers there to know that, but in terms of what, what is being proposed and why it's being proposed and why it can't be more similar to the existing design, and I guess I'll just start with saying, my only real experience with this was as a National Park Service employee in Yosemite, when the road washed out, we had to consider whether, how to replace parts of a rock wall that lined Highway One forty. And similar to this was built in the thirties, this just incredibly gorgeous, you know, historic rock wall that because of, it was an emergency situation, got built into this horrific concrete-stamped granite wall. And while I don't think that what is being proposed is as horrific as what happened in Yosemite, it's something that still makes me physically kind of cringe when I see it, and so I just want to make sure, especially considering that this may affect other bridges in the area, that we are taking this very seriously in terms of the overall look, because while future generations may never know what was lost, the same the way they may look at a stamped rock wall in Yosemite and think that that's a great thing. It's, you know, it, it would be important to me to try to prevent what I've seen happen in another area. So I guess that's more a long-winded thing to hope that Caltrans will address when we get to that point.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. All right, and with that, then, let's go to the applicant's presentation. If the applicant has any comments? Maybe not.
I do see some attendees from Caltrans here. Carla, you and Daniel Wackey. They're historian. Michelle. I don't know if Carla has her hand up.
Okay, great. And now Michelle also. All right, wonderful. Let's start with Carla. Miss you?
I see Mitch Dallas's face on Carla's camera. He's on mute.
Yeah, hey, sorry, you guys. I had a technical difficulty here in the office. Hopefully you can hear me. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I just ran up the stairs. Catched my breath. All right, so, thank you, guys. My name is Mitch Dallas. I'm a senior coastal resources specialist here at Caltrans. I am here to talk about the Garapata Creek Bridge rails. I know you guys have a lot of questions. There's the controversial subject. Up to start my slideshow and go over the presentation, but you guys may have, you want me to address your questions first, or would you like me to get into my presentation?
I, I think if, let's, does your presentation perhaps already tackle the questions?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Let's go with that.
That would be preferred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, do you guys have my presentation there? Do you, do you want me to do it, or you do it?
You
You should be able to share your screen.
Yeah.
Okay. Give me one sec here. I'm on a different computer. Just gotta find it real fast. I apologize for the delay. Here we go. Okay, here we go. Let me share my screen. Okay, here we go. Garapata Creek Bridge rail replacement. Talked about the purpose and need. The project proposes to upgrade the existing non-standard rail to the current standards in order to ensure the safety and reliability of Highway One. Project need to reinforce concrete burial rail posts that have deteriorated along seventy-five percent of the left and right-hand barrier rail lengths. Severe cracking with unsound concrete and spalls, exposed rusted rebar have been documented in the bridge inspection reports. And so that's the purpose and need. I'll show you guys some of the existing conditions out here. These are the considerations, you know, so we're fully aware that there's considerable public concern about the bridge. The railing was constructed in nineteen thirty-one and is in damage beyond repair, as determined by our Headquarters Division of Maintenance, Office of Structures Maintenance and Investigations. The new railing must meet modern safety standards for modern vehicle sizes, weight, speed, in addition to safety requirements for bikes and pedestrians. Our traffic safety engineers are unable to request a design exception or recommend a reduction in speed, and I'll, I'll go into that much further, so you guys can understand the considerations behind that. So as you guys know, most, a lot of you folks know me. I've been working in Big Sur for about twenty-five years. I myself and my staff and our whole team here at Caltrans is fully aware of the concerns about the historic and the visual elements of Big Sur and this bridge in particular. We've gone to great lengths to accommodate the design, to do exactly what the Coast Highway Management Plan directs us to do, which is match it as closely as possible, and that's exactly what we've done. Through my presentation, I want to dispel a lot of the misinformation that's out there regarding the speed limit and this bridge in particular. Couple of pictures of the existing structure, you can see it's clearly, each one of these posts has a single rebar structure. This bridge is ninety-two years old, and it's very close to the ocean, and the elements ultimately win, and such is the case here. You can see there's spalling and cracking that's severe in nature. Here's another one. So it kind of gets into this, why do we need to replace the rails to modern safety standards? And it's, it's a simple answer. It's safety for the public, the traveling public, the millions of people that come to Big Sur annually, and, and and, and this is what happens. I'm going to show you an example. We have a similar rail type, and when a modern vehicle strikes this rail, this is what can happen. It's a devastating consequence, not only for the people involved, but for the environment as well. You can see this big rig's gone over the rail, lands in the creek, all that fire retardant down there washes straight into the ocean. That's a concern here. We have the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary a few hundred feet away. This is a real concern, especially at Garapata Creek, for this ninety-two-year-old railing that's crumbling. We have design constraints, and this is going to, I'm going to touch base on the speed study and the importance of it. The existing railings damaged beyond repair. There's no solid doubt, no solid foundation for repair. The open windows can be catch points where vehicles and bumpers can potentially catch on the rails and could cause or worsen accidents. Not only vehicles, but pedestrians as well. We have a lot of pedestrians in Big Sur, either hiking or biking. This accommodates their use as well. We got to accommodate all users. Current safety standards require the base height and the thickness and the top rail thickness to accommodate the modern vehicle designs, weight, and existing speeds. The modern vehicles are extremely different than they were in nineteen thirty. We have tons of R Vs, tons of, you know, single-family vehicles. We have gas trucks going to facilitate the gas stations in Big Sur. We have, you know, big rigs going through there to accommodate the restaurants. big rigs going through there to accommodate the restaurants and all the hotels and everything. There's, there's a considerable amount, considerable amount of users that use this bridge. We did a speed zone, excuse me, speed zone survey, specific to the Gerapata Creek Bridge. It was done in December twenty nineteen. Survey resulted in the eighty-fifth percentile, the ser- of the vehicles going above the posted speed limit of fifty-five miles an hour. This is a critical point. It was, it's brought up about the speed and the reduction of speed, and I want to dispel the, what, what the the perceived benefits of lowering the speed limit to forty-five are. Lowering the speed limit to forty-five will not achieve our goals here. The speed that people drive is what determines the safety elements associated with the highway. Here, the speed is above fifty-five miles an hour. The average speed is fifty-eight miles an hour. We have to design to that speed. We could post the speed limit at ten miles an hour. That doesn't matter. People will still drive fast through that area. It's a straightaway. Been documented that people drive faster than the posted speed limit. Thus, we have to design for the speed limit that people are actually going. Not what we want them to go, but what they are actually doing. So, that's where the speed limit study determines what type of design the barrier needs to accommodate for vehicle speeds, weights, size and heights. There's considerable environmental concerns, and we're fully aware of this stuff. I mean, this, this is our backyard too, and we fully appreciate it. We have architectural historians that have been involved. We have specific guardrail design engineers that have taken several years to develop this custom design that we built for this bridge. And I'll, I'll just point out real quick that there is a reason Historic Resources Review Board approved this project. It's because we've gone to great lengths to accommodate the needs out here. We, we are mimicking it as close as possible. We need more strength and a larger rail at the bottom to accommodate the, the modern conditions. You know, I'll, I'll continue on with the environmental concerns. It's a contributing resource to the Carmel-San Simeon Highway District. It's eligible for the National Register. As you guys know, Big Sur is designated as an all-American road and state scenic highway. Excuse me. The maintenance of Highway one is guided by the Big Sur Coast Highway Management Plan. Big Sur Coast Highway Management Plan specifically calls for replacing these rails as close as possible. And I want to reassure you that that's exactly what we've done here. It's close as possible to meet the modern safety needs. And clearly, there's visual and historic resources at stake. We're fully aware of that. The preso- proposed design, with understanding the, the concerns from the public and the county and the Coastal Commission, we designed these aesthetic design advisory committees, and we held several meetings, six meetings in particular, to speak input from the public and professionals in historic preservation. Our historic preservation, our historic architect and our landscape architects ran those meetings and solicited input from the public. They were well-attended meetings by people across the board. The sequel and equal review, and the section four F evaluation, the section one oh six consultation with the State Historic Preservation Officer and the tribal consultation have been completed. They all agree with the design, and they're all comfortable with the offsetting measures that we are proposed to accommodate or to account for the loss of the visual resource. And again, it's, it's not a complete loss. It has to be upgraded because it's crumbling before our eyes. We, the design is very, very close to the existing design. We're talking a few inches here and there, and I'll, and I'll go into that here in a minute. So, this rail was custom designed for this particular location. You know, we spent years designing this rail based upon the design, safety standards, environmental impact analysis, and professional and public input. Here's a graph showing you the differences in what's proposed versus what's out there now. And I can, I'll just rattle these off real fast if you guys bear with me. The rail height will stay the same. There'll be no changes in rail height. Arch window height will, will be a little smaller. The type eighty-six H, this middle column here, it's going to be fifteen point one two five inches versus twenty. It's a reduction in less than five inches. The arch window itself is currently ten inches squared. Ten inches wide, excuse me. The new, the new proposed railing is six inches wide. So there's a reduction in the arch window width by four inches. And I want to dispel a, a misinformation thing that's out there that the type D four eleven that was mentioned earlier in staff's report and Coastal Commission, and a few folks seem to think that that's the answer here. It also has six inches of width. There's no change in the width with that structure. The, the windows are just a little taller with that one. But again, we're not able to use that one because the speed is such that it's over the fifty-five mile an hour limit. We have to design for what people are actually driving. So, the baluster length, six inches, six inches, there's no change. The width, it's currently five. It's going to increase the width by two and a half inches. Base height of the curb, this is the biggest one, where you, you notice the difference the most, in my opinion. Right now, it's nine inches. The proposed rail is eighteen inches. It's basically doubling the height of that curb, and that's one of the main safety features of this rail type. It redirects the cars back towards the center of the lane versus through the railing and off the cliff. Or not, you know what I mean, into the canyon. The base width is currently twenty-one. It's going to be twenty-four and a half. It has to be bigger to accommodate the strength required for these modern vehicles. The base height at the arch of the windows is currently twelve inches, and it's going to be eighteen. The top rail height is nine inches. It's, the new one's going to be ten, so it's an increase by one inch. The top rail width is currently ten inches, and it'll, it'll be sixteen inches, sixteen point two five, as you can see.
For the chair, could you just remove the live captions box, just as, for those of us following along, there's a, yeah, that thing. Perfect.
Oh, thanks. And so, yeah, that, those are the and see, they're fairly negligible. They're, we're talking a few inches here and there. These are some sims. There's the existing on the bottom, and there's the proposed on top. You can see there is a little bit of difference, and mainly, like I pointed out before, it's this bottom rail is the, the biggest part that catches your attention. It's taller. It's basically twice as tall as the existing rail, and that's very important because it's the key safety feature of this. It redirects the vehicles back to where they need to go versus over the rail. You can see the difference in these cross-sections. They are different, but they're fairly negligible, and they are as close as possible. That's a fact. We've, we've studied this extensively. Here's another sim. The, you can see, you can still see through the rails. They're just a little bit smaller, but we're, we're matching the overall intent of the rail design. Here's another change. The existing barrier will be a little bit longer at the ends relative to the new barrier. Or relative, excuse me, let me, let me take a second there. The new barrier will be longer with these approaches to the bridge versus the existing barrier. This is just a modern safety design. It's, it helps people from hitting the end of the bridge, basically, is what the intent is there, from a head-on into the, the rail. Here's a sim. You can see the in-block. This is what I was just pointing out. This is a newer feature, this in-block. That'll accommodate a safe transition from the highway itself onto this bridge structure. You can see the existing, you know, views in the background are, are mostly terrestrial. There is a small ocean view right in the middle of the bridge, which you can see here. Uh, this is the southern end of the bridge. Um, it's another sim. We're gonna do, we're gonna stain the all the metal characters associated with the guardrail to mimic the existing character. We're gonna do color, match the color of the concrete, the texture of existing structure as well. So here's some mitigation measures that we've, we're committed to. Um, most of these are from the ship, oh, excuse me. So these are the, these are the, uh, measures we're gonna accommodate. Um, the historic building survey, historic American engineer, historic American landscape survey, documentation and coordination with the National Park Service. EPR five twenty-three inventory forms, all, forms for all seven Big Sur arch bridges will be inventoried and focused on their specific historic design context. And a lesson plan will be developed for elementary school aged students, and interpretive website will be developed as well. Coupled with all the applicable measures for biological resources, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and the traffic management plan. Again, here's the existing structure. There's a reason the Historic Resources Review Board recommended approval of this project. It's because they've seen that we've gone to great lengths to accommodate this aesthetic, the aesthetic remains. It's just a modern version of it, and that's required as of the existing speeds at this location. That concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions. I'm available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Uh, after that presentation, I'd like to come back to my fellow commissioners who got asked questions earlier, just to check that your earlier questions were answered, and if not, would you like to repeat them for Mr. Dallas, or even if you have new questions for Mr. Dallas? I know we can go on to other Caltrans people who might want to present. And I think we have a hand up, but I just want to double-check with my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Daniels.
If there was further Caltrans presentation, I'm happy to wait.
Okay. Let's see, I don't have any other commissioner hands up. And the Caltrans hand went away.
That, that was my hand.
Okay, okay.
I do have my, a team of specialists here with me, so we can just field questions as, as needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Daniels, why don't you go ahead?
Just FYI, S one one zero nine two seven is typing.
They muted themselves now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, um, this is just a comment, and I, and maybe you can clarify for me if this is accurate. I think Big Sur is one of the more unique places that visual access being something that is really highlighted in the land use plan as one of the primary ways we experience Big Sur. It seems like the new design, which I recognize great lengths have gone to make it look very similar. And I recognize the need for more strength, but it seems like you can't see through the bridge in the same way. I mean, that original design has something almost magical to it, where you could have these railings and you could look, you could be driving or looking from a distance, and you can actually see right through to the other side, even though the, the railings exist. It almost becomes transparent. So is that lost in this new design? Or is some of that still retained?
Some of that is still retained, and, and keep in mind, when you're driving fifty-five miles an hour, that, that view is, is very not, not very sharp and crisp. It's, it's just a blur as you're driving by, and that'll still be there. It's a little subjective to the viewer themselves. Coupled with the fact that if you just move your eyes ten inches higher, you have the entire expansive view, not so much the rail.
Yeah, I, I hear you, but I mean, you can, you know, a- as a passenger, as a visitor, looking, you can look down, you can see the creek bed. You can see things that you don't see when you look over it. So I mean, that is, I just want to be really clear and recognize that that's probably where a lot of the concerns are coming from, that there is this loss of something in that original bridge design that is really quite spectacular. And so, okay, and then it sounds like you did answer the question that perhaps it was a little misleading in the Coastal Commission letter that there was the opportunity to just move to a different bridge design if speed was reduced. And, and then you also said that that new bridge design doesn't accomplish perhaps exactly what I was just talking about before, the same visual, retaining the same visual aesthetic.
I, I would agree that the railing, the, the window width is six inches on the new design. The railing width of the, the one that, uh, the C eleven, C four eleven, excuse me, um, is also six inches. It's a little bit taller, the window itself, because the curb height isn't as big on the bottom, because the, the vehicles are moving slower. The curb height on the bottom thickness is, or, or height is, uh, specific to the, the speed of the cars and the weight and the height of the vehicles themselves. And that's on your point about the window width itself. The, the ten inches that's currently out there is, is been determined to not be safe. The, it's a catch point for vehicles. It's a catch point for bicyclists, for pedestrians. It can result in more devastating accidents is, is what the conclusion is across the state and across the nation. Um, so please keep that in mind, that the, the ten-inch option that's currently out there will, will not be built again in modern times.
Thank you. I will wait till public comment is done, I guess, and see what transpires. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Any other commissioner comments before we go to public comment? I see no hands up.
I, I got my hand up. This is Greg Catteray Beck. I'm still with Caltrans. I'm a bridge rail specialist for statewide.
Terrific. Thank you for letting us know. Please, go ahead.
And I just want to let you know that yes, with that, with the width, the clear width between them, uh, were limited by the modern standards. And the reason for the modern standards is so that pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists can't fall through the clear opening. Uh, with the ten-inch wide opening, any, any adult could fit through that. And, uh, and so, and the reason that it is the width that is, is because of actual accidents that have happened in California and elsewhere, where people have indeed gone through the clear openings. And in terms of the, trying to increase the breadth of, as you approach and pass the, the, any section of the bridge to increase your field of view. We, we've got the edges of the balusters are beveled so that you can see through the gaps sooner, and then as you pass them, you see them farther back. Your, if you extend the lines out, uh, the lines, the bout, the, the bevels at the corners increase that angle of being able to see through them rather than having the balusters squared off, uh, at the edges. So that, that, that greatly increases, uh, the angle of, of view to still see through, uh, the bridge rail. And the heights, uh, we did, we did everything, I did everything I could to maximize the height of the balusters. And, uh, the balusters, the height of the balusters, uh, although it's, it's just cannot meet the, the same, uh, height with a T L four ratings that are on the existing bridge. Uh, I've got the, the curb is beveled, so it goes down on the back. So as you're viewing from your vehicle on the bridge, your view opens up because the curb is tilting down. It's not level. And because of that, the balusters are a little bit taller in the back than they are in the front. Um, and so, our, our clear opening at the traffic face of the rail is one foot two, but as you go back to the balusters, which are set back- But as you go back to the balusters, which are set back a little bit so that they don't act as snag points with vehicles, um, uh, it's one foot three on the traffic, on the traffic face of those balusters and one foot four on the back face because of this curb is going downward. Uh, we did, and we, and we did computer simulations to maximize that opening we could get and still pass TL four. So we, we eked out every bit we could, um, uh, trying to, uh, preserve the view and to get it as close to the existing as we possibly could.
Thank you so much.
That's it for now.
Thank, thank you for that.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. I, I appreciate that we got to hear from the person who designed the bridge, but I was, that was new information for me. I wasn't aware that the Garipata Creek Bridge width opening would allow for a person to get through it. Is that what I heard, that a person could fit through the ten inch openings on the bridge?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not, I mean, I've driven the bridge a lot. That seems pretty wide to, it doesn't seem like that's one of the issues that we're dealing with right now. But correct me if I'm wrong.
That, that is the reason for the reduced, uh, clear opening width.
The, uh, just to be clear, that a person could fit through the Garipata opening? Um, what do we call the arches that are up on the bridge? I want to get this right. The ballast, what is the name of the openings along the top of the bridge?
Well, you got the clear openings and, and the top has, uh, an arch. And then you got the concrete balusters, uh, in between.
So I'm not talking about the concrete balusters. I'm talking about the arches with the clear openings. And at the current width on the Garipata Creek Bridge, um, the opening is large enough, and this is one of the issues for an individual to get through.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's whether it's pedestrian, bicyclist or motorcyclist. All if they fall or get knocked from their vehicle, the bike or get knocked from motorcycle.
Yeah, just, just to re, just to add to that, um, it's in an accident situation. They're not just going to be walking by and fall through it. It's, it's in, in an accident when somebody could get pushed through one of those windows or openings, I should say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dallas. Commissioner Roberts?
Um, to follow up on the information that we've just heard, I'm curious to know if there are bridges in California or elsewhere, specifically historic bridges and scenic areas, if there have been modifications made to bridges, um, to compensate for the safety issues without a full reconstruction of them. If we were, I, and I guess my actual question is, is if we were to reconstruct this, these rails in, you know, in a soundly engineered way, um, to mimic the existing railings even more closely, would there be a way to modify, um, that not, it, it different than what is currently proposed?
No, there wouldn't be.
So you're saying that there's, eh, eh, any bridge, if there's another historic bridge, whatever it may be, I, I don't know what the Golden Gate Bridge is, or, I mean, I, you know, they have fences along the outside or whatever it is to, is there, there's, so there's no other way to make that modification?
The, the Golden Gate Bridge is, is not a very good example because it's a completely different type of rail and bridge. And, and there's a, as you know, there's toll booth associated with it that produce the traffic speed. And, um, the, the current design is, is based on federal and state standards to develop, to, to make a safe situation for the traveling public, not only the cars and the trucks and the gas trucks, but the, all the people that utilize the coastal trail, the bicyclists. Um, it's, I, I want you guys to, to be assured that we've put a lot of effort into this design. It, it mimics exactly as possible as we can. That's the intent of the CHMP, the Coast Highway Management Plan, that I know Monterey County is a critical part of. Um, we, we foresee the, the need to replace these rails. It's identified in the CHMP that was written several years ago. It's finally time. They've, they've deteriorated to the point where they need to be replaced. Um, and so we've done exactly what we've, we've set out to do is to mimic this design as closely as possible to accommodate the current needs. It, it mimics the aesthetic. The Historic Resources Review Board agrees with us overwhelmingly. They, they understand everything that goes into it, but they also understand that safety is a critical part to this. The millions of users, it's not just the folks that live right there. It's the millions of people that come from around the world, um, to, to enjoy Big Sur. Um, we have to accommodate for all the users and we have to make it a safe condition. But hopefully that answers your question.
It does, and I appreciate that response. I, and I don't question the need to update an old bridge and its safety. I guess, having been a, an employee of the National Park Service and dealt with historic, um, things, I, I mean, I, I know that there are exceptions and considerations made for very unique resources such as the bridges and the landscape and the visual resources of Big Sur. And I just, this is, this is a, this is an important one to me. And, um, eh, eh, while I understand that the Golden Gate Bridge is very different than what we currently have, I, I also know that it's Caltrans' job to create safe roadways and, but it's also our job to, uh, you know, find the best, the best balance of creating a safe roadway while protecting our very unique resources.
I completely understand you and appreciate that as well. The, uh, and that's exactly what we've done and we've come to a balance. Normally we would, we would put up an, an existing ST seventy-five rail that is, that's in other locations in Big Sur on some of our newer structures. Um, that's off the shelf. We can just, we have a design for it already. Um, that's not the case here. It doesn't, it doesn't match as closely as possible, the aesthetic here. And I see that our architectural historian, Daniel Lecky, has his hand up and I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak because he's the, he's the guru on this architectural historian stuff. Thank you, Daniel, if you guys don't mind.
Uh, thanks Mitch. I, I don't know about guru, but, um, I just wanted to kind of attempt to, I guess, add a little bit of perspective into the conversation, um, about the historic resource. And, um, in this case, you know, we've done a lot of work here, but there's, there's essentially just a, a kind of, uh, incompatibility between historic preservation here and the modern standards and making sure that we have, um, you know, a safe roadway moving forward, causing, you know, this adverse effect on, on the historic bridge. Um, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of different considerations as a, you know, state transportation agency, but safety is, is by far the utmost. Um, and so while we're doing everything we can to develop a, you know, a treatment for this that is compatible with the historic resource, i- it needs to be updated for, you know, to move forward as, as a safe roadway. Um, you know, when we think of these historic, uh, monuments, uh, across our country, like, you know, the White House or, uh, you know, Independence Hall or, or things that, that kind of get brought up, the one thing to consider is that, uh, you know, a lot of times those, you know, historical monuments, you know, their main function is to sort of survive as, as a historical monument or, you know, a museum piece. Unfortunately, this, this bridge, it's, it's not that. It's, it's very historic. It means a lot to all of us, including everyone here at Caltrans. But it's, it, it's also a functional piece of our, of our state roadway. And we have to kind of, I think, keep that in mind, um, that it, that's its foremost function. And honestly, as a historian and, and as somebody who cares about our historical resources very deeply, I, I would rather see it, um, you know, with these small modifications, be, be able to be preserved as a part of the roadway. Um, you know, it's, it's very essential historic function rather than, you know, end up in, in like a museum somewhere in pieces, um, just to kind of preserve those smaller details. So, um, I, I just think it's important to kind of remember that, uh, particular perspective that it's, it's very historic, but it, it also still functions. And that's kind of what's so awesome about it. So, uh, but before I put my foot in my mouth, I'll, I'll pass the torch. But thanks so much Mitch for just giving me a second to kind of, um, say that.
Thank you so much, Daniel. The third thing that I'd like to add is, uh, as you guys probably are aware, if you, you've driven the Coast Highway recently, um, we're, we're going to great lengths to, to keep these bridges functioning. We, we just are wrapping up an electrochemical chloride extraction project on this bridge, in particular on the structural elements, uh, below the bridge, which will buy us about ten, maybe twenty years of more service life of these bridges. Um, you know, they don't last forever, especially when they're close to the coast. Um, there's these elements, there's the fog, the salt laden fog, there's, you know, considerable winters like one we're having now, all these things to consider. But we are going to great lengths to extend the service life of these structures, not just this structure, but multiple, the six structures that are mentioned in the EIR. Um, and I also want to articulate that each one of those bridges will be looked at individually. They're all site-specific, they all deserve their own analysis and attention, um, and custom design, by the way. And that's our intent. A lot of people are worried that this is the precursor to the Big Spree Bridge. And, and we're fully aware of that. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean that this is exactly what we're going to do at Big Spree Bridge. We're committed to looking at each location individually and coming up with a custom design to accommodate the historical resources and the aesthetic. I think that's a very important piece. Um, and I know Michelle Wilson, one of our coastal, uh, resource specialists also has her hand up and I'd like to give her an opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mitch. And again, I'm chair members of the commission. I just wanted to add one reference to the, um, for context, uh, that where the six inch, um, requirement for the clear opening comes from. It's from the ASHTO's Bridge Design Specifications. And ASHTO is a national standard-setting body that establishes, um, specifications and test protocols for, um, bridge design throughout the nation. And, uh, California has adopted, has an amendment specific, um, specifically called out in that design manual. So this is something that's a, it's a national and a state standard, um, throughout.
Thank you.
Thank you, myself. Okay, I think that's all we have. We're open for questions or more questions?
I see Daniel's hand is still up. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, apologies, I just left the, uh, the hand up there.
No problem, thank you. All right, I had, well, I had two questions. I think the first was answered, um, by S one, one, zero, nine, two, seven. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but we look at fences and fence design so that we can see through the fence as we're driving by and at an angle. And you mentioned that this design will allow for that. Am I, did I misunderstand? So we can actually get a better view through the fence as we're approached or through the, through the rail?
Yes, uh, the four corners of each baluster are beveled so that if, if you took, if you took a straight stick and you stuck it through, you're going to wind that around a significantly greater angle of view to still be seeing through the bridge rail. As you're driving and approaching it, you will see through it sooner and you will see through it longer as you're looking backwards. Um, re, versus if all the balusters were squared off.
Right, okay.
So, um, we did that because, because with the narrower opening, uh, we knew that, uh, we needed to, uh, improve that, that angle of view. Uh, and, and that, that's what we did.
Thank you. And then the other question was just to understand, I, I think the cus, the word custom design came up. Is this a custom design being applied here for our specific need? Or I think Mr. Dallas used the term off the shelf.
Yeah, we took, we, we developed, uh, a standard bridge rail and then made, uh, numerous aesthetic revisions that were still within the allowable to not, uh, uh, take away from the crash worthiness. If you, if you do too much, you got to do new crash testing again. Um, and so we've added, uh, horizontal lines in the, in the lower curb and in the upper beam. We've added where at the posts, it comes up a little bit and has a two-way arch, you know, both longitudinally and, and laterally. Um, so that that kind of, kind of mimics what the existing bridge has. Uh, we've added, uh, features to the end blocks at the very end of, of, of the bridge. Uh, uh, we did the bevels. We've added, uh, we've matched the locations of the strong post to be directly over the top of the spandrels, of the spandrel arch. Um, where the back, where the posts had grooves down the middle, we've matched and put grooves in the post to match those grooves. So we've done as much as we possibly could. And a lot of them were from great comments we got in, uh, I forget if it was six different ADAC meetings we had. We had lots and lots of input that was catching little things, uh, and we incorporated them everywhere that we could.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to touch on that again. Yeah, the, the six, uh, aesthetic design advisory committee meetings that we, we held, a lot of that, uh, a lot of those specifics were gleaned from those meetings. That's not a normal process that Caltrans does. It's not even required, honestly. We, we reached out to the community to try and get input because we understand the concerns about the aesthetic and the historic stuff. So we wanted to, to open our doors and allow, uh, as much input as we can to, to make the best possible, uh, replacement railing here, which is what we've done.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Um, I had, go ahead.
Okay, I could add that, um, in case you've seen photos of other bridges around the state, there's been a few bridges around the state where we were able to rebuild the exact same thing in kind, but only because the bridges were wide enough that we could put a new MASH crash-tested rail in front of it. And it was wide enough to have a separated sidewalk be, between the traffic lanes and a pedestrian walkway. And, and then the rail along the edge of the deck only had to be strong enough for bicyclists and pedestrians rather than for vehicles. Uh, and in some cases, we had to add some mesh in there also, again, because of the, the opening size and, uh, the concerns for pedestrians and bicyclists. But we didn't have, on this bridge, the bridge is too narrow to, uh, do an inboard bridge rail and have a separated walkway and use, uh, a rail that on the edge of deck that's much more like what is there right now.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have two more quick questions. The first, I apologize in advance. It might sound offensive, but it's just a thought. Is cost a consideration that might have precluded a more appropriate aesthetic design? No?
No, I will tell you with, with the aesthetic, uh, modifications that we've made, this bridge is going to set a new record for cost per foot, uh, getting that formed up, uh, just the way we want it.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is regarding any kind of liability? If we know that there is a possible safety issue? If we know that there is a possible safety issue or based on studies, there are safety concerns? And then we deny this design prioritizing aesthetics over the safety concerns that Caltrans is documenting here with us? What would, is there a liability concern for us as a commission, as a county?
Let me, we have our traffic safety engineer here with us, Pete Hendricks. I'd like to defer that question to him, but that is, that's, I mean, that's the bottom line here is liability in public safety. And that's, that's a major concern of Caltrans is, but I'll let Pete talk to that. He's our senior traffic guy. Pete, are you there?
Yeah, I sure am. Thanks Mitch. Good morning. I think it's still morning. Good afternoon, council members. I cannot actually answer that. So from the state's perspective, yes, there's liability associated with that. But that's, that's your call as a county and your right to deny this. But there would definitely be liability associated with this. The rail is deteriorating. And the traffic characteristics are such that, you know, I would be concerned as a single unit box truck driver. That's your two-axle truck that's making numerous deliveries to the Big Sur area and to the businesses during the course of the day. If they were to get off course for some reason or another, I would, I would not want to be in their shoes. And so the risk of injury or fatality with these kinds of antiquated rails are pretty great. And so I, yeah, I would, I would say that there is some liability, but you would want to speak to your own attorney as a county.
And luckily for us, we have years.
Yeah, Chair, as far as liability to the commission, no. If the county was sued, the county of Monterey would be sued, not, not the commission specifically or any commissioners. Whether or not there would be liability, I mean, I hate to say this and sound too lawyer-y, but it really would be fact-specific on what occurred and the specifics of the case. I do think as a commission, you're taking all this information in and I don't think you're making a choice over safety or aesthetics. But I think you need to weigh all that in the decision that you all will be making today.
Thank you so much for that. All right, back to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Work.
I just had a question. I think it's a question. Say we do this and you said something, I believe, about 15 to 20 years before you might have to look at the understructure. I'm just kind of curious what that would look like and would it cause trouble with the cost of what we're doing now? I mean, would we be able to do all that work underneath and not have to worry about what you do railing? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, thank you. Let me, let me clarify. We just are wrapping up the electrochemical exchloride extraction project right now. It's currently being done. This is the next element of keeping this bridge alive, basically, of maintaining its function. The electrochemical chloride extraction project has already occurred. We're in the process of wrapping it up right now. So that's, that's the superstructure and everything below the bridge and the bridge deck. This is going to be the railing. The railing isn't part of that. It's crumbling on its own, as you can see from the photos that I provided. And so that's already happened. So that, this is the next step in the preservation of this structure.
I guess what I'm, how much? I guess I know this railing is going to weigh out less what's underneath is what I'm getting at. So are we, is it just a overkill Band-Aid? I don't know. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's, it's an attempt to not have to replace the bridge structure itself is what this is. We're trying to buy time to keep this thing functioning because we know the importance of, you know, the community and these arch bridges to the area. But like I said, they do not last forever. At some point, they'll need to be replaced. We're doing every measure we can to keep these things functioning appropriately and that's what we're doing here. We've done the electrochloride extraction. Now we need to replace the rail because it's literally crumbling and we need to provide a safe environment for the traveling public.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see any other commissioner hands up and I am aware of the time. Fellow commissioners, I think we heard from everyone from Caltrans. So do we want to take a break? Do we want to take lunch or do we want to hear public comment now and then take a break? Maybe a break in public comment? I hate to keep the public waiting to make their comments through a lunch period. But I know that, you know, we've been here a while. I just would rather take another 10-minute break and then come back for public comment if my fellow commissioners are in agreement. Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, perhaps we can see how many folks are here by raising their hands who's here for public comment because I am conscientious of folks who've been waiting all morning to make public comments. So maybe we can see. And I know some folks are having trouble lifting their hands, so.
Yeah, we've got a few. Yeah.
I think personally, if you do feel like that you need a break to take one, but it would be great to get to public comment without delay, I think, but I'll defer to my colleagues.
I don't see any other commissioner hands up. I need a five-minute break. Thank you. Back in five.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, here.
I don't know if we'll need to take roll call again, but before we do that, can we just make sure that someone is ready with the clock for the two minutes and that I don't miss any public commenters?
Yes, I think.
I'm ready with the clock. Thank you.
Hey, will you roll call?
Thank you.
To make sure everyone's back. Commissioner Daniels?
I'm here.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Chair Montalve?
Here.
And Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Everyone's returned.
Great, thank you. All right. I see less hands up than before. I'm worried, but okay, let's start from the top. Ms. Anne Marie Wyble?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I am a mother, grandmother, teacher and member of Albion Bridge Stewarts. In Albion, on the north coast, along the coast, we have a 78-year-old historic timber trestle bridge. And it might last for another 78 years unless Caltrans is going to tear it down. I, I'm surprised that Caltrans doesn't want to tear down this bridge and is not talking yet about tearing down all the other bridges which are listed to also be historic bridges. The Big Spree Bridge is visited by people from all over the world and we need to look at what's happening in the world. There's a bridge in France, the Pont du Gard. The French are not going to touch that and ruin it. We cannot ruin these bridges or nor the Albion River Bridge in Fort Bragg, close by. An individual had to fight for 12 years with the Coastal Commission to get railings that are going to work, that were approved in another county and in another state. So there are ways to do it. Caltrans tries to be very slick and it all sounds very lofty. To have a lesson plan, an interpretive website is a joke, even if it's maintained for 10 years. We need a mitigation. What are you mitigating by ruining this bridge? If people drive 55 miles an hour, there's no way somebody.
Thank you, Ms. Anne Marie. All right, then now we will move on to Mr. James Walters.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello? Oh, okay. First, a personal note, before I came to Carmel, the largest historic.
Mr. Walters, your signal is breaking up a lot.
For the Historic District Group. I can't hear you. I was chairman of that group for 20 years. Was that preservation, once you let something go, it's gone forever. And what my point is here is that I don't think any of the reasons that we have heard today that we can't do some of the mitigating things like repair or reduce the speed or any of those things, I don't think they've been exhausted to the standard that we need to before we do a change in this. Secondly, I don't think, I think it's disingenuous to start with Garapata. I think like the last speaker said, we should look at Bixby and say, all of these bridges, there are six bridges and they need to have integrity among them all. And I could just hear five years from now, somebody saying, well, we did this at Garapata. Let's do it at Bixby. Idea that there's going to be individuals for each bridges, not a terrible idea, but I just don't believe it. So I think we need to revisit the whole thing and make sure that there isn't a way to do, you know, kind of restoration instead of full replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right, now moving on to Ms. Christina McGinnis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Montalve and Commissioners. My name is Christina McGinnis and I'm speaking on behalf of Big Sur Wild, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to the preservation of Big Sur and the implementation of its protective land use plan. The primary public access consideration in the land use plan is visual access for the traveling public. Big Sur's bridges comprise an important part of the historic visual access to the coast that the Big Sur Land Use Plan protects. Highway 1 in Big Sur is designated as an all-American road, an American national scenic byway, a state scenic highway, part of the Pacific Coast bike route. Big Sur's six arch bridges are worthy of continued historic protection and should not be changed to meet Caltrans' new project MASH standards. This is not a new project. It is a repair of an historic resource. As the letter submitted to you yesterday by the Coastal Commission references, the bridges themselves are state and federal historic structures. These bridge rails should not be modernized and should be exempted from modern designs due to their intrinsic historic value. They should be repaired and restored, but not replaced. During his recent Historic Resources Review Board, many of our members wanted to attend but could not due to the storm. Caltrans showed the proposed design with smaller openings and the increase in bridge thickness. This will have a significant impact on the ability of the traveling public to view scenic. This will have a significant impact on the ability of the traveling public to view scenic coastal resources from Garapata Bridge. We have repeatedly requested visual simulations for the driving experience with the smaller openings now proposed for the bridge rails, but have not received anything but static images that do not answer the question of how the new railing will impact visual access to the coastline for the traveling public. The planning commission and the public should be able to see a driving simulation for this project. Uh, the primary recommendation from the Design Advisory Committee for this project was to restore and not replace these railings. We're also concerned with the precedent this would set. And we appreciate your time and consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Mr. Tim Green.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Tim Green and I'm speaking as a member of Keep Big Sur Wild. Caltrans is responsible for the safety of Highway one and are aware of the historic, cultural and visual values which their safety project threatens. They have refused to allow any challenge to the relative importance of these concerns. They have said repeatedly that there is no alternative to the implementation of the new safety standards. So the critically important historic, cultural and visual values have never had an opportunity to seek an exemption from these standards. The open rails of these historic bridges are the only aspect of the bridges that most people ever see. And they allow a nearly uninterrupted view of the coast. Visual access is the key policy of the Big Sur Land Use Plan. The new safety rail is a modern concrete channel with smaller holes and very questionable visible visual access to through them. These are not just small modifications of the original design. Caltrans has never responded to multiple requests for a visual representation of the views through these rails. We believe that the primary historic, cultural and visual character of the bridges will be lost to the public if the new safety rails are allowed to replace the original balustrade rails. We asked the Commissioners to watch a brief video of the view through existing historic rails and to consider what a loss of their replacement would be for the public. These rails have successfully served for ninety years for tens of millions of cars.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, on to Daniela's iPhone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Are you Daniela?
Yes, this is Daniela De Sola.
We hear you.
I'm, um, I'm speaking as a Big Sur resident and as an architect. I actually live directly north of this bridge and I cross it daily. Uh, I'm against the current proposed design for the railing. Um, I'm not questioning that the railing needs to be repaired or replaced, but I feel that the design of the railing is extremely important and I feel that, um, not, not everything has been considered. I understand how important safety is and safety can be achieved both via speed limit and the design of the railing. And I'm questioning two points that were raised. One was the potential catch points and I'm wondering if you've ever had this occurrence documented on any of the Big Sur bridges. Um, and I really find it hard to believe how a, a human could be able to get through a ten-inch opening, that doesn't seem possible to me, I've crossed this uh, bridge numerous times. And the second point was, you mentioned the speed zone survey and the eighty-five percent of vehicles are going over the speed limit. I, I feel this is irrelevant, um. I, I also don't understand the logic of, you noted that the speed limit is determined by what speed people are actually driving. This reasoning makes no sense to me. If you have a bridge that is historic and is narrow and that currently already has, you know, a a sign saying narrow bridge approaching, um, I don't see why it would be a problem to add a, a, a speed limit to this bridge. So my concern is that the current design is based on not wanting to change the speed requirements at the bridge area and that if the speed were reduced, we could have a design that better matches the existing design.
Thank you, Daniela. I am looking for other public comments and there are none.
Chair, you have a light hand, you have a hand that's light.
I see it now, Lisa Kleisner?
Uh, my hand matches my skin tone FYI. So, um, I live on the south end of the bridge and then out of my kitchen every morning I see the bridge. Um, I want to say that I was a little bit flummoxed at the comments from Caltrans regarding the safety of the bridge and the comments regarding the rail and the possibility of someone falling through that. I've walked and biked across that bridge over the twenty-three years that we've lived here, numerous times. I think the issues, the safety issues on Highway one have nothing to do with the bridge railing, but have a lot to do with driver behavior. And all you need to do is go down to Bixby Bridge on any busy Sunday and you'll see a lot of driving activities that are illegal and dangerous. And those are the things that Caltrans should be paying attention to along with law enforcement. We have the same issues at Garapata Beach. Law enforcement is usually non-existent at Garapata Beach. This last weekend was a great example of a lot of illegal activities and no law enforcement there to take care of safety for the traveling public. So I would, uh, I would argue here that for the last ninety years, this bridge and its rail has been certainly sufficient for the safety of the traveling public. And that the focus really of this conversation, if it's about safety and we're gonna spend money on safety, it should be on looking at the driving, the traveling public, the driving behavior, the illegal activities uh, that they, that folks and vehicles and pedestrians are doing along the highway corridor. And if that, if money is spent on that, we will have a safe Highway one, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kleisner. Do we have any written public comment?
We have no additional written correspondence for this item, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer, do you see any other hands up? I'm scrolling and I do not.
I don't see any, I see Phil's hand up now.
Through the chair?
I see.
We have repeat.
Two hands up, now we have a repeat hand.
I spoke too soon. Okay, I'm sorry, uh, there was actually an email uh, just forwarded by Phil, which is probably why he has his hands up. Um, and I will forward that to you all here shortly, it's from Ellie Van Zee regarding this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have already heard from Ms. Anne Marie and Ms. McGinnis and I think if we open this up to back and forth, we could be here forever. Uh, where, I'd like to know where my Commissioners stand, do any of you have any other comments? I don't see, uh, Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, um, no other Commissioners have any comments at this point? Okay, yes, I'm looking at my screen now. Uh, I, I do have comments and so I'm just one thing that I'm thinking about was just said, that, you know, we do have an issue with public safety in Big Sur and along Highway one and in particular around where these bridges are and it really does have to do with the behavior of the driving public and more and more the behavior of the pedestrian public. And so that is, that is, that is really how we address public safety in this, in this location. And um, I'm gonna go back to the original point that I made at the very beginning, you know, when I'm driving down the Big Sur coast and I see a sign that suggests that there is a very curvy location coming up and the speed limit sign tells me to reduce my speed, I reduce my speed. And um, and if that wasn't satisfactory, I, I know there are other measures that maybe can be investigated that would um, allow for the public to slow down as they approach a bridge. So um, I also wanna be very clear that it, it sounds, as we've heard this presentation, like we're looking for some standard fixes to standard public safety issues. And I do not wanna be in a situation where I'm arguing with Caltrans about, about public safety. Uh, that's not something I'm comfortable doing. But I also believe that we are, we, we can't look at Big Sur through a standard lens mainly because, as this Commission knows, this is a very unique land use plan. I don't know any other land use plan in Monterey County or anywhere else in this, in the state that values visual access and highlights visual access in the way that the Big Sur Land Use Plan does. So if you had visual access through a very uniquely designed bridge that now you no longer will have, that's something that should cause this body to stop and, and, and find out, are there any other choices? And so it's, it also sounds like the, the entities that have moved this project forward, I know the Historical Resources Board was cited earlier. It's, if I remember correctly, they were not given a choice, this was the sole option, so if, I'm sorry, the phone's ringing behind me, um. I just, that, I'm gonna leave it there because I got distracted by a phone call, but um, I would like to to just suggest that a standard approach to a very unique situation might not be the best pathway forward and, and should perhaps cause us to pause at this point in time.
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels, Commissioner Roberts.
I'm happy to say what I was gonna say, but I wanna make sure we've given the applicant an opportunity to respond to the public comment, if that what he's, if that's what he is wanting to do.
Go ahead, Mr. Dallas. You're on mute or not anymore, ready? Actually, we can't hear you.
Uh, thank you, can you guys hear me?
Is that Mr. Dallas?
Yes, can you hear me, this is Mr. Dallas.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, there were a lot of comments there, um. I wanna reiterate the fact that this is not a standard approach here. This is a custom design for this specific bridge. The standard elements that, that have been mentioned are, are safety features. There's certain, certain, uh, configurations that need to occur to allow for safe uh, travel across this bridge. It's a custom design, we had six ADAC meetings, accessory or aesthetic design advisory committee meetings to seek input to, to develop this design. That's far from standard, that's, that's the opposite of standard. This is a specific custom design for this bridge, I wanna make that clear, 'cause a lot of effort's gone in to accommodate this. Um, including crash testing, which is incredibly extensive. I also wanted to touch base on the speed element here. It's part of the California Vehicle Code, that our safety hardware associated with the highway has to be relative to what the traveling public is speeds. And that's why, that's why we do speed studies to determine that. We could post the sign at ten miles an hour, this is a straightaway. People are gonna drive fast through it no matter what. That's all there is to it, I mean, that's, that's the case all over the state, that's why the California Vehicle Code directs you to accommodate the speed of the traveling public. That's a critical element to this, everyone thinks that we can just reduce the speed limit and come up with a different design, that's not the case, coupled with the fact that even if that were the case, the bridge window width would still remain at six inches. They may be a little taller, but they'll still remain at six inches. Um, I also just wanna reiterate that, uh, we're fully aware of all these concerns of these folks and, and we're we're making every effort to, to accommodate this rail design, that the rail's beyond repair, it needs to be replaced, we can't repair it anymore, we've been repairing it for years. It's deteriorated from the salt-laden environment to the point where it's, it's no longer repairable. Um, and we did offer another design option to the Historic Resources Review Board, there was the Texas C four twelve. It was a different railing type, they, they rejected that, so did the ADAC, they didn't like that railing at all. Um, so I wanna make that point clear, it wasn't a our way or the highway, pardon the pun, uh, type of a, an approach. Um, and that's what I'll have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Commissioner Roberts.
Um, I guess I just wanted to say that I, I don't think I will be supporting this project as it's currently proposed. Um, I'm just not convinced that this is the right project for this bridge and because of that, I'm, I'm not willing to make a statement of overriding conditions for the visual impacts. Um, which are significant to me, um. I'm also really concerned that the cumulative impacts of the update or repair to all of the bridges hasn't been considered and given the sensitivity of visual impacts in this area. Um, that's, that's, that's a pretty big concern to me, um. I, I mean, with all that said, I, I mean, I, I definitely do believe that the existing rail probably warrants repair and I'm concerned that, um, that this bridge and the other bridges who potentially warrant repair are currently suffering from benign neglect because you know, because of the, these pending projects and, um, you know, that certainly seems like a problem and I hope that uh, any repairs that can be made until we have a decision, um, are being made.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, Commissioner Mendoza.
Uh, yes, I would actually have to agree with Commissioner Roberts, um. I think that there's more that can be done in reference to the railing on that bridge itself, um. You know, it's kind of an icon, it, it's a bridge that, uh, we've had that railing there for, for many, many years, um. It would almost make more sense, you know, we, we have new materials, we have new ways of reinforcing, um. I think if, if we really wanted to keep it the same, uh, there has to be a way of doing it, uh, just because the new engineering that we have available to us, the new materials, uh, you can reinforce instead of having one rebar going down the middle of each one of those, maybe you can have two or three of them. So there is a way to make it stronger without it losing its integrity and reverence to the view. That's just my personal opinion and, uh, yeah, myself included, I could not support, uh, this project the way it stands, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. I see, I think I see Mr. Dallas's hand up again, no?
No, that, that's my hand, Greg Katerabek, Bridge Rail Specialist.
Okay.
Just wanna say that, yeah, we, our desire was to be as close to what is out there right now, but even with extra rebar in there and you can't fit too much in, the existing design is very narrow uh, design of the, the top concrete rail and the balusters, you can fit a little more in there, not a lot, um, they would still not even come close to passing current crash testing, um.
Madam Chair, I, I wanna do a point of order here, if we've brought this back to the Commission, I don't think we should continue to hear from the applicant, otherwise we'll potentially need to hear from the public.
Okay, he was, I thought he was responding as Mitch Dallas had responded earlier, but.
Well, we generally allow the applicant to respond all at once before the Commission begins to deliberate.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have no other public comments, I have no other applicant comments. I have your hand up, Commissioner Roberts. You're up.
Uh, I was actually gonna take it down, but, um, I, if there's support, I would make a motion to deny staff's recommendation based on, um, what we've discussed today, particularly, I don't know if it's true for everybody, but for me personally, the cumulative impacts of the bridges um, being considered for repair and, um, the. um, being considered for repair and, um, that, you know, for, for me personally, that this doesn't feel like the right project for this bridge.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second, Commissioner Mendoza?
Uh, yes, I would second the motion to deny the project.
And Chair Monsalve, it's not a clarity for the motion maker and perhaps the second. Commissioner Roberts, is this a motion, um, that you're trusting staff to create a denial?